Okay, we're gonna start off with the city managers' briefings. And Mr. Leahy, I believe this might be the last one for you, huh?
I think so. It certainly would be the last one as the acting city manager because a fine young man that you selected takes over next week.
Oh, that is gonna be great. And once again, thank you for everything.
And let me say that I've spent many hours with him now. You, council, should be commended for what a great selection you did.
Oh, thank you. That's very gracious of you. But, Tom, when it came time for somebody to step to the plate during a time of great need and, dare I say, crisis, you have risen to the occasion in the most exemplary way. But your entire tenure with the city has been nothing short of exemplary. And I think I speak on behalf of many people up here and the city and, you know, the city workers. And, you know, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and it's been an honor and a privilege.
Thank you.
So, the first order of business is a city manager's briefing. And if it's okay with council, we'd like to change the order and put the public safety briefing at the end for two reasons. Number one, Mr. Kovar and Ms. Sutton are watching the governor's press conference, which is starting right about now. And he's, it is rumored that he's gonna make some significant rollbacks in the Forward Virginia Plan for Hampton Roads. And then also, Dr. Lindsay was tied up with the school board until 3:30 so that, and she felt that she had addressed council. So we've, we're moving number one to the end of the list.
Not a problem at all. Thank you.
So our first item up would be the potential short-term parking lease at the Lynnhaven Municipal Marina. And our Director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Kirschman, will make that presentation and answer questions you might have.
Michael, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, council members, Manager Leahy. I'm here to briefly go over the potential lease of parking spaces at the marina to an adjacent business that I'm sure you all know, Chicks Restaurant, right next to it. So if you're not familiar with the marina, this goes back at least 50 years now. It's about two and a half acres. We have 50 slips in years past. We've had vacancies there, but for the past few years, they have all been filled with a waiting list. So it gets quite a bit of use. Slipholders pay a fee based on the size of their slip. You can see what they pay per year. We also have some commercial slipholders in there, and we also have slips there for fire, police, and EMS. Total onsite is 90 parking spaces. And when I arrived here two years ago, the city was in the midst of repairing the bulkhead. There was a bulkhead failure at the marina. That required significant improvements and reconstruction. And there is, of course, also an agreement in place. The city receives about $1.5 million per year in dredging from the Army Corps. And one of the stipulations of that is that we have a public marina in the Lynnhaven. So there's been a lot of history at this site with parking, lots of different options over the years, either with adjacent businesses, with the neighbors. I don't wanna go through the entire history, but you can see it goes back a good 13 years in terms of different things that have been tried. Now, most recently, about a year and a half ago, when we were repairing the bulkhead, the city did need a construction easement from Chicks. As part of that construction easement, in lieu of the city paying them a fee for the construction easement, we did have an agreement in place where we leased to them free of charge 40 spaces. So you'll see there in May 2018, we did a temporary lease with them. They got 40 spaces so that we could repair the bulkhead. After that project was over, that agreement went away. And just recently, we did give them temporary permission to use 24 spaces in light of the COVID situation in need for parking. That lease isn't in place until a decision is made by city council to formally enter a lease with them or not. Hence why I'm here. So here's the request. The request is that we would lease to Chicks Oyster Bar 24 spaces at the far end. You can see that on the diagram. Slipholder parking would all be in front of the different boats and the different slips. They would, they're asking those for April through September, although they could add on months. We would be okay with that if so desired. We would charge them $50 per space per month at $1,200 monthly, and it would be for no more than five years. So what's happening today is the brief presentation this afternoon. There is a public hearing this night. It was advertised. In addition to that, Parks and Recreation did notify adjacent property owners, all the slipowners, and of course, Chicks Restaurant as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Moss.
When was the notification provided?
July 6th to current slipholders, nearby residents, and civic associations.
So eight days prior to the public hearing. Okay. How did you set a value? What analysis, what research did you do to establish that the value to the public, not the value to them, but the value to the public, was only $50?
So we contacted Public Works and Public Parking, and they provided that value to us.
Can, do you know what analysis may have to do with it? I'd like to know. There's a lot of research on how valuing public assets, because what it's worth to the public isn't necessarily what it's worth to the private sector who's making the money. But if that was private property, I suspect it would cost more than $50 a month to get that parking. So I would like to understand what methodology they used to value the public value that we're giving up. I'd like to know how they determined $50 was accurate.
I can check with them.
That'd be great.
Sure. Happy to.
And so what normally would we provide people as a public notice before a public hearing, since that was over the 4th, just after the 4th of July weekend in the summer? And people, I'm just, maybe that's just not enough.
Right. And that's why we notified them directly. So we emailed all of them directly, plus they had them in the paper. But we wanted to get the word out right away to them.
I've just heard from some people, you can imagine, Mr. Mayor, that that wasn't much of a notice for such a big decision affecting their communities. I'm just concerned, obviously, because we're having the public hearing and having the vote on the 21st, so they'll still have time to come out and watch this. But we really ought to strive for a better notification in the future. I understand, but it's, just so you know, that was feedback. Maybe you didn't receive it, but I'm sure other council members did too. But I appreciate your briefing. But I would like to know, I think we underprice the public value of public assets. I'm sure they charged, would charge you more than that for going on their easement of their property. What do you bet?
I can't answer that.
Yeah, I'm certain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Is there a need for the specific date?
No. There's, there's, from our standpoint, there's absolutely no rush. We can delay this, defer this, extend this. Decision can be made anytime.
So this is gonna be my recommendation. I mean, obviously, we're gonna hear your speakers on this. And I shared this with you. I'm concerned about the census of the available parking spaces for the slipowners. And if you leave it on that picture, please. You know, and the way I understand it is that there are 50 slips. Everybody gets four parking passes, but there's only 90 spots. And, and at least anecdotally, what staff is telling me that it's, there's typically sufficient room most of the time. But, but the concern I have is somebody who's paying $1,000 a year on average for this, they need to be able to make sure they got a parking space. And so that, that's my concern there. So, so what I'd like to do is I would like to, and I know this is already on the agenda, right? Mr. Stiles has already been noticed and everything for next week.
Well, the public hearing was noticed for today.
Right.
The, the agenda will be set for next week, tomorrow, and it would be just advertised as part of your regular agenda.
So it's just not something, okay. So I would make this recommendation to council that we not actually hear this next week because I think we really need to get at least a couple of weeks of census data on, how many spaces are available and, and how this is used. Because, because absent that, I think it's gonna be very difficult to do it. I mean, I've heard from, you know, so I've heard from the neighbors, some of the neighbors are concerned about this because they think it's gonna be parties and things like that. But honestly, that's gonna be employees, so that's not gonna be the issue. But I've also heard from, from people who have boats there. And their concern frankly is, well, you know, I, I never can use all four of my parking tickets, but, you know, I need to at least have one space guaranteed, so.
Can I add on to that?
Yeah, sure.
I've also heard, and this picture doesn't show it, and I haven't been out there, but people are saying to the, I guess would be to the east, and I couldn't have the direction right of this, there's a park. Is that correct?
This is a park. No, we have no park in that area.
Okay. I've had someone send me a note saying that there was something, a park. The facility, the facility has been designated as a park. That's the, I think that's what came from. Okay. I haven't been out there, and I thought, hmm, well, it looked like there was a home right across from there. I was just trying to understand why they were saying that in their emails. Hence, the parkings are, I mean, the parks are. I understand. I was just trying to ask the question based on emails I have gotten from residents, and I thought, well, where is the park? I couldn't see it. So, okay, that answers the question. Thank you.
So I mean, so my, if I can, so my recommendation is to council, if everybody's okay with it, that perhaps when we set the agenda, we, we put this off at least a couple of weeks so that we have the ability to get more data. And also, it gives people more time to react to this because, you know, there are, there are at least 50 specific stakeholders we know of, plus, you know, the surrounding neighbors and everything.
What do you think, August 1st? Push it back till then?
Sure. And just so all the council members know, we did pass out to you copies of any and all correspondence we've received, the date on this subject. So if we're anybody for or against this lease, you have a copy of everything we've received so far.
Okay.
So August the 4th is the direction? Is that different?
Yes. You know, the first meeting in August. Was that okay? Jim?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a meeting that you're gonna be, I'm sorry, Mr. Moss.
No, go ahead. Don't, please.
I apologize. That's the meeting that I think you're holding at the convention center because you have...
Westminster.
Westminster.
No, Westminster.
No, Westminster.
Westminster.
Later.
Westminster.
All right. Would two weeks from today give enough time, Jim?
So, can you get us two weeks' worth of data?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Moss.
One last, do we get a copy of the lease that they sign? I'm just trying to understand, does the lease say they actually have the right to exercise four spaces or how?
No.
I'd just like to get a copy of the lease.
We'll give you a copy of the lease, but the lease states that they get four parking passes, but they are not guaranteed any spaces. But they can come use four spaces at any given time before are available.
But they're not even guaranteed a single space?
They're not guaranteed a spot, but they're given four passes.
Okay, I'd like to read the lease. Okay, great. You could give me a copy, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Before we, before we move on, so right now, Chicks is operating under a temporary encroachment. And the reason for that was we could not, because of COVID and the backlog, we simply couldn't get up in front of you on this issue. Would it be, is it council's intent that we would continue that temporary encroachment for those 24 spaces until that meeting or?
I think, I think in fairness, what does the rest of the body think? In terms of fairness and, you know, not to, you know, you know, the restaurants were kinda hard hit, you know, so we don't wanna impede. So is that okay with anybody object?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr. Leahy.
So next up would be planning, glimpse of the planning pending items. And I guess, is Bill Lanfair here? Who's here for, or you? Who's gonna handle that? So our Director of Planning, Bobby Tahan, will handle this. That's music. I apologize.
Didn't know I had theme music. That's okay.
Just put the camera on, Mr. Tahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I do apologize. My team, coming from the other location, we are not, they're not here yet, so I apologize. But I will go through the pending planning items for you for July 21st and July 28th. You have nine items on your, planning items on your July 21st agenda. These are all regular planning items with no short-term rentals on this agenda. First, I'm sorry?
Can you just go back? I just want to...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
First item that's on the agenda is at 213 and 215 A 69th Street by Melissa and Paul Venable. This is for an alteration to an existing non-conforming use. Staff recommended approval, and the planning commission voted 9-0 to recommend approval. On the site now is an existing two-family residence with an additional single family in the rear. They have been condoed and have separate ownership, which causes this to, in the R5R, to be a non-conforming use because it's technically on one property, three units. They are planning to alter this existing non-conforming use in the front, which is the duplex. And they are proposing changes to the roof and dormer in the rear of the structure, which do not impact the front elevation of the structure. Because it is only a dormer, there's no additional building height or footprint expansion, or again, as I said before, a change in the front elevation. I thought I had additional slides in here, so I apologize, council. Any questions on that item? Item number two is by Linda M. Addison in the Centerville District at 1717 Dancers Court for a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehab center. Staff recommends approval, and the planning commission recommended 9-0 for approval. And this property itself, you can see, is located adjacent to a P1 zone parcel here. And, but it backs right up against that.
Mr. Moss.
Can you tell us, because I know we've approved a lot more of these in the last four or five years, can you tell us by going into the database easily and querying, just to tell us how many conditional use permits we've approved for wildlife rehabilitation? Is that doable from the data system?
I can have someone look that up and get that.
I don't wanna spend a lot of man-hours. If it's a simple query, I'd like to know, but if it's man-hour intensive, don't do it. But if the query just, put it in there and it gives you the answer, I would like to know.
Yes, sir. We'll look into that. The applicant is requesting initial use permit for the home-based wildlife rehab center. They are a licensed veterinary technician. They had inquired to the state on how to operate, which is how they learned about the conditional use permit. They are limited, they, in their application, they've limited themselves to indoor urgent and emergency care for animals, plus outdoor care for box turtles. You can see that the area is well-vegetated, and they do have this outdoor crate area off to the side behind the fenced-in portion of the residence for the turtles.
Were they on the agenda before and pulled off and...
I'm sorry, Ms. Wooton, I didn't understand.
Were they on the agenda before and then pulled off and withdrew and...
No, no, ma'am. There was, there was a previous one that was withdrawn. This is a different application. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Item number three is at 993 Laskin Road by Vogue Lashes and Spa in the Beach District. It is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor, although it is actually for microblading.
Oh, okay.
Staff does recommend approval, and a 8-0 vote. The planning commission also recommended approval. So again, this is within an existing beauty salon. The current building is going through renovations to the interior and exterior. They do have a non-conforming sign on the property, which is recommended in one of the conditions to be brought into compliance with the zoning regulations. The applicant is amicable to that condition, so they can provide a better sign. Again, this is for microblading. This isn't a standalone tattoo operation, which would be a different, which we would note for you as a different request. But due to the way the state law defines tattoo parlors, it, microblading is included in that.
Are you just doing Mark's job for him?
No, sir. Just putting the information out that I'm aware of.
Appreciate all the help I can get.
I see Mr. Lanfair has, has been able to get here. I will hand over the presentation to him if council's okay with that.
If I can, I just, I just wanna make a little comment that I do on this. I would really love to find a way that we can peel the permanent makeup out of the tattoo thing because having people have to come in for this just seems a bit burdensome, but...
Understand. Yes, sir. And we'll move to item number four.
Will you ready to prepare? Yeah. Thank you.
All right.
My apologies.
No, we started early. We moved things around, so you're, no problem whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. Next item is item four. This is a request for a modification of conditions for religious use. The existing church was built in 1965. The modification of conditions is requested to permit the construction of a 2,800-square-foot one-story administrative office addition to the church building. This addition will complement the architecture and character of the existing church. There is ample parking to accommodate the needs of the church, and there is no known opposition to this application. Next item, item five, is a conditional use permit for an automotive repair garage. The applicant is seeking to, I'm sorry. The applicant is seeking to expand his business to include the addition of a paint booth within the building itself. This requires a conditional use permit as the existing automotive repair facility predates the need for a conditional use permit. Aside from the removal of an existing non-conforming sign on the property, no other changes or expansion of the building is proposed. There's no known opposition to this application. Next item, item six, is a request for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home. The applicant is requesting an in-home daycare facility for up to 12 children in the Brandon neighborhood. The applicant resides in the semi-detached dwelling and has over 20 years of experience caring for children. Backyard's enclosed with fencing to allow the children to play. Again, there's no known opposition to this application. A question I have on that. Is there a reason why we won't know the social services number before we have to vote on the application? Mr. Moss, it's dependent upon the ages of the children that she will be caring for. So, for example, if the children that are enrolled in her facility are younger in age, then she will not be allowed to care for up, for as many as 12. It may be 10 or 8 or... So is there a matrix that social services uses? I believe they may have one, and we can, we can get one for you. I'd like that, thank you. Next item, item seven, is a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. This tattoo parlor is located within an existing 2,500-square-foot unit of a shopping center located in the southeast corner of the intersection of General Booth Boulevard and Dam Neck Road. You may remember this shopping center. It used to have a Kmart store, which is no longer there. No exterior changes are proposed except for the building-mounted sign. Parking within the shopping center is deemed adequate to accommodate the use. There is no known opposition to this application. Item eight, this is a request for a conditional use permit for a community boat dock. This dock will be shared by adjacent property owners in the Shore Haven subdivision and replaces one that was damaged during Hurricane Dorian. A joint permit application has been submitted, requiring approval by both city staff, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the Virginia Marine Resources Commission. There's no known opposition to this application. I will now turn the briefing over to Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Welcome.
This last agenda item is a ordinance pertaining to the setback for in-ground pools. What this is, is reducing the rear setback for pools adjacent to the Atlantic Ocean. This only impacts the properties zoned R7.5 between 42nd and 49th Streets. Several years ago, we made this change to the ordinance for the R5R properties, but overlooked the R7.5. So this will be consistent all along the oceanfront. They have a 20-foot, sorry, I'm out of breath, 20-foot setback, but there is that property that is unimproved right-of-way where they have the sea wall. So it looks like their rear yard, for all intents and purposes, the pools would still be 20 to 30 feet from the sea wall, but we would reduce that setback to five feet to allow for the construction of pools without a BCA variance. Any questions? And there is showing the unimproved Atlantic Avenue, which is, for all intents and purposes, the property's rear yard. All right, now on to the agenda for July 28th. There are 13 short-term rental items, all except the last item, Justice Swango, which you will recognize, were heard by Planning Commission on the May 27th agenda. All the items were recommended for approval by staff and planning commission. Items one and two are a short-term rental request for two units within a 42-unit condominium complex constructed in 1985. Both staff and planning commission recommended approval. The units themselves are, each have two bedrooms. Two spaces are required. Both are onsite, located on the other side of the building in a parking lot. Here is a vicinity map. They are in the oceanfront area where short-term rentals are expected. There are 35 other short-term rental requests on this map in the general vicinity. They are not advertised on a platform right now. They are not registered, and there have been no recent complaints. There was a complaint years ago, work being done without a permit, but that has been cleared up. Items three and four are short-term rental applications for both units of a duplex located in the OR district. It's an older, older building constructed in 1951. Both staff and planning commission recommended approval. Unit A is a two-bedroom unit, sits up front. Unit B is in the rear, three-bedroom. All parking is available onsite, is in the residential parking permit program. So the condition is recommended for no guest spots. There are a lot of short-term rentals in the vicinity. 75 units actually are shown on this map that are registered or under consideration. They are currently advertised, but with no registration. There are no zoning complaints on the property. Item number five, Mission Enterprises, is a short-term rental for one unit in a two-story mixed-use building located in the OR district. The building was constructed in the 1950s. It's kind of an odd building. There is a longstanding commercial use on the bottom and a residential unit up top. A few years ago, there was a complaint filed that it was an illegal dwelling unit. When we researched it, it was actually constructed before the adoption of the zoning ordinance and is non-conforming. Again, it is in the OR district in close proximity to the oceanfront in the Vibe District, an area where there are several short-term rentals, 45 as a matter of fact, on this vicinity map. It is advertised as a short-term rental and is registered with Commercial Commissioner of Revenue at this time. Item number six is a short-term rental request for a townhome located on the western portion of the Shadow Lawn neighborhood, just west of where the single-family neighborhood is. Townhouse was built in 1973. Here, this picture shows the townhouse. It is a two-bedroom unit. Both parking spaces are provided in front and reserved for that unit. It is in an area where short-term rental use is common. There are several other units registered in that development. Six, as a matter of fact, in the townhouse development. 20 are in the area, as shown there, in the Shadow Lawn area. It is advertised. It is not registered as of yet. No zoning violations were found on the property. Items seven and eight are short-term rental requests for two units along Norfolk Avenue, constructed in 1984. Staff and planning commission has recommended approval of these. Both units are one, one-bedroom, require one space, and that space is designated onsite to each unit. It is in an area close to the oceanfront where there are several short-term rentals. There are 50 registrations in close proximity, five other CUPs that have already been approved. There has been no listing found or no registration on the property. Even though staff believes they may have been operating, they are not advertised. There was a complaint a few months ago about a fence and dumpster enclosure, but that has been cleared up. So there are no pending zoning violations on the property. Item number nine is a short-term rental request for one unit in a duplex located directly adjacent to the Chesapeake Bay. This duplex was constructed in 1988. It is for a two-bedroom unit. Two parking spaces are required. They are both met onsite. One is underneath the structure, as seen there, and one is in the driveway directly behind the structure. There are approximately 20... There are approximately 25 other short-term rentals in close proximity to this unit. Staff has found that it is currently advertised on Verbo. No registration is found, and there was a BCA years ago, but it has nothing to do with this request. Next item, item 10, is a short-term rental request for a townhouse located in the Bayside Villas subdivision, located off Witch Duck Road near Independence. This is a townhouse and unit constructed in 1985. As you can see by the site plan there, its orientation on the lot, it has an extended driveway. All three required spaces for the three-bedroom unit are met on-site. This is an area of the city where short-term rentals have not been prevalent. This is actually the first one we've seen in close proximity. We have found no listings online for this property or no complaints. Item 11 is a request for a short-term rental within a single-family home. Home was constructed in 1950. It is in pretty close proximity of the Chesapeake Bay. It has three bedrooms. All three parking spaces are located in front in that circular drive. As I mentioned, there are several short-term rentals in close proximity. Staff was not able to find this unit advertised online, nor is it registered. There have also been no zoning violations with this property. Item number 12 is a single fam, a short-term rental request for a single-family in Thalia neighborhood. It is new construction. The permit was closed out in 2019. It is a three-bedroom home with three parking spaces provided, two in the driveway and one in a single-car garage. There are not...
Mr. Wood has a question, I believe?
Yes, Councilman.
Is this subject of a BCA variance?
Yes, this received a BCA variance for sideyard setbacks, as most of those in Thalia do.
Did they disclose then that they were going to use it as a short-term rental?
No. No, they did not.
Did you recall what they said they were going to use it for?
We processed it as a single-family home. I don't believe that it ever, to my recollection, it wasn't noted that it would be a rental or a single-family home. We assumed it would be a single-family home. And we've seen a bunch of these come through the Board of Zoning Appeals, just because of the thinness of the lots.
I'm aware of that, but I mean, I think when they do it, the people who don't comment or don't show up at the BCA hearings is because they assume they're going to be regular...
And we've had several of them have extended lease, you know, year leases on these. This is the first short-term rental that I can recall on this, this style home.
I couldn't understand. Could I get the actual BCA write-up on this?
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Mr. Moss.
This is an example of where you have a strategy, and the BCA is probably mindful of how to make affordable housing, and you go on this kind of thing. But in reality, the marketplace of greed, and I'm not saying capitalism is based on greed, but sometimes when we think we're doing one thing to get one policy outcome, we're, we're not getting the public benefit that we think we are when we're giving people something they're not entitled to. So, there probably needs to be, at some point, some education with the BCA and the strategy about what, I don't think they can impose conditions to variances or not, but at some point, we've got to figure out how, when we're, when the public is giving something that someone's not entitled to, which is conveying a substantial economic benefit, there is no public correlating benefit being received. And that's a very one-way transaction, and I'm all in favor of people getting what they're entitled to. But when you're getting something you're not entitled to, there ought to be a correlating public compensation, much like a private individual would expect if they're giving an economic benefit. Where is the public equity in the trade? And this isn't a public equity trade. This is a public equity giveaway. I realize you don't control that, but it is something that this body should be mindful of.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you. Okay, and the last item under consideration is item 13, Justice Swango. This is one that should look familiar. On June 16th, you voted to reconsider it. It is a short-term rental for a single-family home in the Shadow Lawn neighborhood, an older home constructed in 1966. And that picture probably jogs some memories. If you'll remember, the driveway, initially it was done not to the approved permit. It has since been fixed where it jots in to meet requirements. The home itself has four bedrooms. All four spaces are met in that driveway. As I mentioned, it's in the Shadow Lawn neighborhood. There are several, as you can see on the map, other short-term rentals in the neighborhood. There was no advertisement found online for this listing. With that, I'll open it up for any additional questions.
Any other questions? All right, Jessica, Ms. Abbott.
Kevin, just a general question. It sounds like our software is online now for researching these?
Yes, yes, it is. We have our contract with host compliance. The staff has been logging on and checking every application. It's able to find if it's listed and advertised online, where it's advertised online, and is there a registration filed. It's been a very handy tool. We've also been able to use it on a couple complaints to track down that they were actually, in fact, short-term rentals. So, the software is working very well so far. Granted, we've only had about a week to play with it, and I'm sure it capabilities beyond what we've found so far, but it's been great so far.
Excellent. Right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Henley.
Well, this is, I'm sure, not the right time, but what I'm asking is, when is the right time today to talk about short-term rentals? I sent an email to you folks asking to have some discussion today in light of the debt collapse at Sandbridge. So, where on the agenda do we plan to talk about it?
I'll tell you what, you know, can we bring that up during council discussion today, Mr. Siles, Mr. Leahy?
Yes, sir. To your agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I'll tell you what, one of the reasons we incorporated the council discussion is for, you know, such thing to allow any individual councilperson to, you know, bring things forward. So, when we go into city council discussions, you'll be item number three. Fair enough?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wood.
Can I go back to item number two, please? Looking at the wildlife rehabilitation facility, there was an ordinance that was, I was working on and some other members were working on, and it was in response to other applications that were requested in the Centerville District. And I want to know where that ordinance is. I was told to delay it for some time, but I want to make sure in approving other applications of this sort, that I'm being fair in doing so. But I need to know where that ordinance is, what, what the status is on it, so that I can, you know, ensure that happens.
Yeah, could you please? Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Ms. Wooton and Ms. Abbott, you both had, had requested that we take the fee for rehab home, home rehab to zero, because they were doing a service for our, for the city in taking these animals. However, in researching, it has come, we've come to the conclusion that this will be in violative of the Dillon Rule. We do not have the authority to do it to zero, and let me just quickly explain to you why. In order to take the fee to zero, what you're really doing is making a donation to that individual or that corporation, or whoever it is that may be coming in to get it. And there's a list in the state code of places where we can make those donations. And this just, I just can't see how this can fit in unless they become a 501(c)(3) or a charitable organization of some type. That's how we do organizations that are 501(c)(3)'s. We charge them less for CUPs and rezonings, but I'm sorry to say, we're not able to do that in this case.
Would, would you mind sending me information on what those options are that you mentioned, so that those who do want to continue to care for animals, what the options are that I can present it to them? Because I get several requests for it many times, and I want to just make sure that I'm giving out the correct information and at least helping to support people who are kind enough to perform such a service.
Yes, ma'am. I'll send out an email to you and Ms. Abbott tomorrow with a, with a deeper explanation.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Abbott.
I'm really, Councilwoman Wooton, thank you for bringing it up. It was on my mind when we were going through these as well. Just out of clarification, Kay, can we, can we reduce it or we can't change it?
We can't change it.
Unless they're a nonprofit?
Yes, ma'am. They, it has to be the same as everybody else unless they are. And there's a list. It's about this long, but the one I always go to is the nonprofit.
Is that something that can be changed at the state level?
Yes, ma'am. It should be, be able to be changed at the state level.
Because I think one of the concerns why Councilwoman Wooton and I were even, you know, going through the process of investigating it was, a lot of these individuals do provide a service to the city without any compensation, and oftentimes coming out of their own pocket to rehabilitate these animals, which would otherwise either not be taken care of or be a burden on our animal control. So, I think it is worth further discussion, and I appreciate Councilwoman Wooton for bringing it up today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Belucci.
If I could just follow up, just a question for my own clarification as I learn more about these types of applications. Is the wildlife, is the conditional use permit for wildlife rehabilitation focused on the care for the animals, focused on the necessity to have the permit to care for the animals or rehabilitate them, or is it to charge to, to conduct commerce?
No, it is to make sure that there are conditions on the use of the property and the care and the disruption that it may cause to a neighborhood, you know, 20 raccoons in someone's backyard.
I guess where I'm going with that is that if, in many cases, I don't know this for a fact, but I would imagine that many of the operators of these facilities don't charge.
No.
And so, they, in fact, they may not be a 501(c)(3), but they're not, they're not charging for their services. So, in effect, they are providing us a service. I'm not arguing your point. I'm just curious.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure I send that to you also.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. All righty. Okay, Mr. Leahy, I believe.
Yes, Mayor.
Aaron Sutton is here.
Members of the council, I'd like to ask Aaron Sutton, Director of the Office of Emergency Management, to come up and give us an update on COVID-19.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, I appreciate Mayor and Council. Thank you for this afternoon. I appreciate you allowing me to move to the end. I was listening to the governor's 2:00 press briefing, so I just wanted to give you some of those high points as well. So, he presented the data region by region, and the, the biggest piece for the eastern region is the moving seven-day average has gone from 60 in June to 356, 346 today. Our testing, our seven-day average for testing has gone up to 10.1 for the eastern region. So, with that being said, he has stated that his first step will be stronger enforcement. The state health director, Dr. Oliver, will be sending a letter to his health directors reminding them of their enforcement responsibilities. He also will be putting teams of Health Department, Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and ABC representatives together to conduct unannounced visits throughout the restaurant and bars, and will be working to deploy additional personnel to help support the enforcement. He asked that businesses step up their enforcement as well, and he will be writing to all the mayors with beaches for updates on their beach plans to understand where they are at this point. With that being said, his other item that he is discussing with ABC is an earlier cutoff of alcohol sales. They have not decided what that will be at this point, but they are in those discussions. And he ended with evaluate, he will be evaluating further measures. So, it is not a complete rollback, but targeted areas to assist in helping to curb the increase of cases for the eastern region, the Hampton Roads region. So, as of today, we have 72,443 cases in Virginia with 1,977 deaths. Virginia Beach has 1,993 reported through today with 32 deaths. And our seven-day average has gone from 11 cases in June to 86 cases. And as I stated, our positivity, our test positivity percentage, seven-day average has gone up to 10.1%, and the state is at 6.9%.
Aaron, how were hospitalizations?
Hospitalizations are not having a significant increase, but it is a lagging indicator. So, as the positives come out, we will probably be seeing increases in hospitalizations in the next few weeks.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Henley and then Mr. Moss.
Was that 10.1 positivity rate, was that Virginia Beach or was it the region?
It's, it's the region, and Virginia Beach is actually 10.7%.
10.7. We were 2-point something not too long ago.
At one point, yes, we were.
That's scary, folks.
Yes, sir.
Didn't Dr. Fauci say that anything over 5% is concerning? Isn't that his threshold criteria?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that's important for the people listening to realize that we have now, because of our own lack of self-discipline, I just have to say that, I think that's what it is, that we're now double, double the upper limit of what's considered to be controllable. That is not a good sign. We really, the public really needs to redouble our efforts.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Wood, and then Ms. Wilson.
So, what, what is the reality of, I understand we don't have Dr. Lindsay?
We're working on it.
Okay. Well, so I'll ask you this, and maybe you can pass it on if you know the answer, but the reality of enforcement, and the reason I say that is, it doesn't matter if I'm going in Home Depot or Lowe's or, or wherever, I mean, I, I just always see large groups of people walking in and walking around without masks, you know, see it all over the place, all sorts of different places. And, and there's, you know, not only, and now there's some, there's some smaller places. A place I went to breakfast today with, with some people, you know, they stopped you at the door and say, "Do you have a mask?" And, you know, that's, I mean, they, they specifically ask you that. But a lot of these other places, people go in, walk around, and there, there's zero social distancing or masks or any of this kind of stuff. And, and if, if we believe what the experts say, then this, this is what's causing the spread of it. I mean, so realistically, how are they going, are they, do they have the resources to enforce it? And, and, and do they have the, the desire to enforce it?
So, the Health Department has the enforcement powers for restaurants and bars. That would be why it was a separate ask to the business community. Beyond the restaurant and bars, I am unsure what the enforcement powers would be, so that I can get...
It's my understanding, in the executive order, the governor said that the enforcement mechanism on the face masks and on the social distancing and all this was going to be the Health Department. So, is that, is he walking back from that?
I don't believe so. He is sending a letter to the health directors to remind them of their enforcement responsibilities, and Dr. Lindsay would be better able to answer that question.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
The question that I have is the time that it takes to get the results from the testing. I mean, I talked to someone today that said it took 10 days to get results of their tests.
Yes, ma'am. The laboratories are overwhelmed by the case number. Just to give you an idea, we had a one-day increase of just under 1,000 cases. Florida had a one-day increase of 15,000 cases. So, if you think about that across the country of the number of cases that are increasing, and testing has increased quite significantly, I think Virginia actually hit 17,000 tests the other day. The labs have to have the capacity to do the testing. It was discussion at the federal level today across many of the news channels. It is a problem not just here, but across the country.
So, what happens when someone is tested and takes 10 days to get their results?
If they felt that they needed to be tested, they should be at home quarantined. And that's why the communication with the Virginia Beach Health Department or any of their health departments for where they live are extremely important. Because of the delay in testing, there are other measures that, that need to be utilized.
And is that message given to them at the time of the testing?
It depends where they've gotten their testing or why they're going to get their It depends where they've gotten their testing or why they're going to get their testing. Uh, if they're being told by the health department to go get tested, they're provided that information. If they're, um, being told by their primary care physician to go get tested or in urgent care, then yes, that is, um, provided.
Hopefully, they're getting a test. Whoever's testing them would say, "If you feel like you needed a test, then you need to self-quarantine until you get the results."
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we got a, uh, press release out on Friday and it did hit a couple of the news agency, but you know, sometimes that's not as effective. Mr. Lee, I understand that, uh, we've been communicating with the governor's office about some preemptive, uh, or proactive measures that were going to be taken, like maybe using fire marshals to supplement or a few other things. Can you get a clarification on that?
Uh, no, I'm not. Uh, we have had discussions with them. They have inquired as to some of the things we might do, perhaps try to share enforcement, but there hasn't been anything finalized at this point.
Okay, but we are in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Abbott and Ms. uh...
I'm curious is for our, our public hearings that we have coming up, are we, do we have a contingent, have, I know we haven't had a discussion about a contingency plan, but if things continue to increase and the governor starts rolling things back, what is our plan for handling our two major planning issues in August?
Well, you know, I think we'll have to confront that at the time. Uh, but, but that being said, you know, we, we can just hope that the numbers start flattening out. This could be just a, you know, spike that just, um, happens. It could be an anomaly, but then again, it could not. You know, we're not 100% sure yet. Um, but, um, yeah, but once again, you know, it's a cause for great concern, but you know, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Ms. Henley.
I, I think maybe we have been a little bit, um, uh, soft on, on getting the word out for what is expected and, but I notice particular confusion about when to wear a mask. And, I mean, I know there's been different ideas, like outside, maybe you are not required to wear a mask, uh, particularly if you're able to socially distance. But inside, I'm also seeing this thought that if you're able to socially distance, you don't need to wear a mask. Um, but I notice, unless we're speaking here in the council chambers, everybody's wearing a mask, which is what I think we should convey to people for at least our meetings, committee meetings and so forth, that people are expected to wear a mask even inside, even if you are socially distanced. I think maybe we're being a little lax because, you know, we've been hearing that they've decided that maybe these things are a little more airborne than they had thought originally and so forth. So I think we might need to just come down a little bit clearer, uh, on what the restrictions are and what people are expected because I think maybe folks have kind of thought that, "Well, we've gotten past this. We haven't done too badly" and folks have kind of relaxed. But, uh, certainly this change to 10.7% positivity rate in Virginia Beach is a major change. And I think we should be concerned and I think we should make statements about it. And I think, you know, conveying to our, our businesses that we appreciate their, their helping us to enforce these things and, you know, make sure you tell folks when they go inside your business that, that you should be wearing a mask, period. Uh, maybe we've just been a little bit too soft.
I have a few other, uh, updates.
Oh, please, continue.
Uh, city staff, I, I will tell you that we're up to 38, um, cumulative cases since March, which is an increase of eight since yesterday.
Okay, Mr. Wood. Okay. Hope when you're done.
Okay. Um, reopening plans continue to come in next week. Uh, public utilities, city clerk, uh, emergency management. Um, the sports tournaments, um, we had, all the stakeholders have agreed on the plan that has moved forward. Um, eviction prevention assistance program in phase one, uh, complete and closed out as of this week. There were 587 applications accepted, 266 completed and 321 apps, uh, applications, uh, were not assisted. The housing resource centers reopening, um, their day support programs began at 50%, uh, which is 30 individuals with two shifts of 15. Uh, two showed up yesterday and one today. Communications is out there and the day program is open. Beginning next Monday, uh, we'll reopen Bayside, Central, Kemp'sville, Prince of Stan and, um, the law library, uh, with limited services, including browsing and checkout items, uh, accessing computers and printers, library cards and picking up summer, summer reading challenge prizes. Uh, the hours will be, uh, Monday through Thursday, 10 to 6, Friday, Saturday, 10 to 5, all subject to change based on, uh, any issues with, uh, the COVID-19 response. We're up to, uh, 57,303 items returned, uh, with an additional 1,200 since fines have been waived. DHS has received 6,868 SNAP applications to date and a percentage of those eligible is about 60% and it's beginning to, uh, level off. The water relief and, uh, rep relief, that program has started, but only 73 apps, um, have come in. So they're extending it to the end of the month. Summer camps continue. The feeding program continues. They're down to about 60,000 meals, um, per week. Um, childcare task force is still meeting, um, to, to help sort out things for the fall. Um, food pantries are still, uh, there's still 47 of them open and the World Central Kitchen programming has, uh, completed. Um, Food Bank and, and United Way have, um, are continuing to partner with us and with our, um, vulnerable populations group to address, uh, gaps in support for, for our community. Um, with that, I'll, I'll open it back up if there are any other questions.
Any questions at all? Ms. Henley and Mr. Wood.
I'm assuming that all of these openings, all of these building openings, like libraries and rec centers require people to wear a mask when they enter?
Yes, ma'am.
And I, I really think that we have to set the standard if we're going to ask our, our businesses to do it. I think we have to do it as well for people who are patronizing our facilities.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Yeah, and I just, just wanted to comment based on what we were talking about, the enforcement. I was just reading the governor's, uh, statement and it indicates that he's actually telling patrons or telling businesses to, uh, tell patrons not to, not to come in if they have a mask. And if they don't do that, he's encouraging them to call the police, have them arrested for trespassing. So I don't know if that's gotten down to the police department yet that they're going to be getting those phone calls, but they probably need to be aware of that.
When I was listening to it, I did not hear that statement. So he must have put that in.
Right up today.
Okay.
Okay, anybody? Mr. Moss.
How many people, if any, were requested rental assistance to prevent eviction that, that qualified, but we had insufficient funding to assist?
Um, the numbers that I have here, and actually I have a, the breakdown right here. Um, so final numbers, 587 applications, 266 applications were completed and began the document collection process. 125 applications were approved and provided financial assistance of $314,538.11. The breakdown is, then it goes further. 116 did not submit documents or were over the income, 19 resolved and six refused assistance. The other 321 applications, 199 applications were due to nonresponsiveness or self-respond, uh, self-resolved or refused assistance. 122 of the applications were declined due to some applicants needing further assistance and referred to the homeless prevention or applicants not having arrears or being over income.
Could I just get a copy, a blank copy of the application that we asked people to fill out? I'd just like to see what the informational challenges that they face. I had another, another question. This gets to the heart of how are we working with schools and what is the plan if the schools don't open? Will we not, I assume we will not be doing our parks and recreation before and after school programs? And then if they are open, is it our intention to operate those programs and if so, at what capacity?
That's why we have a childcare task force program, sir.
Well, I know it's July and August is coming up.
I totally understand, sir.
And parents in schools and people have the plan. So I, I know you got a task force, but as they say, giddy up, go, you know, we got, I think the school, but these are, I know I've talked about this before, but these are things you hear people when you're out in the neighborhood and you're walking your dog or you're, this is the number one thing you hear parents talking about. And I realize we have a, a pace, we've got to have the right answer, but the, the, it doesn't change that when Labor Day gets here afterwards and people are trying to make plans, they, they can't make them two weeks before Labor Day. So I know you're aware of that. I, I want the people out there listening to the parents. These, this is a huge issue for employers as well. And sometimes a decision you don't like made on time is better than the decision that you do like that you can't execute because it came too late. So I, I hope we're all mindful of the, the challenge that our, our families are, are facing. I mean, this is a, we just need to figure out how to responsibly expedite and get to, get to an answer. An answer today is better than an answer the weekend before Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Tower.
Ms. Sutton, could you clarify one thing for me on the eviction relief? Is, do I understand that, uh, there were no applications that were not funded that otherwise qualified?
Based on this information, um, that is correct. However, this is Mr. Friedman's program and I, I will, uh, follow up with him for additional information. I do want to reiterate that there's still a federal or a state level eviction prevention program that's in full swing as well.
Okay, anybody else?
One more.
Yes.
I could. There was a report within the Wall Street Journal yesterday and it was talking about 58 million people are now uninsured as a consequence of COVID and being laid off. I'm just curious, I know you won't have the answer, but I'd be interested in hearing if the people applying for Medicaid has substantially changed as a consequence of that. That just would be another indicator of vulnerability in our community. That's a substantial jump in the number of people unemployed in the country, 58 million. That was an astonishing number.
Something we can follow up on locally.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it. Mr. Lee.
So Mayor, I think we have Dr. Lindsay now virtually and she's, uh, she would like to say a few words to council.
Great, thank you. That works out nice. Thank you.
Dr. Lindsay, if you would pause just for a few seconds before you begin your comments. Connected with your phone and your computer. If you could disconnect from one of those, probably your phone. If you could disconnect from your phone, that would be best. Is she, um, hung up from the phone?
No.
Well, I mean, you want to unmute her computer mic and see how it sounds? Dr. Lindsay, if you could begin, try to begin your comments.
Time is, uh, articulate.
Is that frustrating?
Any of the candidates want to do five minutes?
Are we, um...
I'm sorry. All right. Um, I, I understand that you do have the slides. I'm not able to see them. So I will try to, uh, progress through and, and give you, uh, an opportunity to, to advance there, to advance. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of, uh, city council. Um, I apologize for the delays. I am moving between two meetings currently, uh, meeting with the public school system, uh, at this time as well. So, um, I wanted to have an opportunity to give you a briefing of our COVID-19 activity that we're experiencing in the eastern region and also, uh, in Virginia Beach, uh, in particular. Uh, the last time that, that we spoke, um, I could say, I can safely say that we, I spoke to you with a, a carefully optimistic, uh, tone in, in terms of our outlook, uh, with COVID-19 activity. Um, today is not such a day and, uh, this, uh, we are at a point where I have serious concerns about the activity that we're seeing. Uh, next slide, please. I wanted to remind you of the key measures that the governor has set for, for us with COVID, uh, with our Florida-Virginia plan, uh, for reopening our communities. Uh, and that, uh, includes decreasing a 14-day, a decreasing 14-day trend in percentage positivity, downward trend in hospitalization, also over 14 days, looking at the seven-day average, adequate, uh, personal protective equipment for our hospitals and also other healthcare workers, increased testing and tracing and hospital capacity, uh, sufficient to meet local community needs. We are also now looking at, uh, as a, an important, uh, metric, decreasing trend in the number of new cases and deaths over 14 days. Next slide, please. Uh, this is looking at our eastern region, actually looking at the state and the relative activity across the state. You'll notice that, starting with the central region and moving eastward, uh, there's substantially more, um, COVID-19 transmission activity in our area. Next slide, please. I thought this may be useful to just give you a snapshot of what we're seeing that is going on in the eastern region. At this point, I cannot drill this information down, uh, to the jurisdiction or city level. However, it, uh, very closely mirrors, uh, what we are seeing and concerned about in the Virginia Beach area. And this is a, um, depiction of a dashboard that shows eastern region metrics of COVID-19 disease transmission activity. And these metrics use a methodology that combines the burden and trend, uh, figures of, of disease activity, uh, to the overall, uh, community transmission rate. And here we're looking at, uh, following along the left column, um, moving from either green, yellow or red being the most of most concern. Outbreak, the number of outbreaks, increasing or decreasing? And we're in the yellow there. The rate of outbreaks in, per 100,000 population as a region, we are in the red. And moving over to the right, and you'll see that, as you can see the graph there, sort of the direction we're going in. In terms of the percentage of cases reported among healthcare workers, this looks fairly well. This is surprising. I think it may have a lot to do with the standards and efforts that hospitals are making quite successfully in trying to protect their staff. However, our emergency room visits are going up dramatically. We look at the curve to the right, you can see that slope has taken a very sharp turn upward. Hospitalizations are also going upward in trend, trend in absolute numbers. Hospital beds are right now, we are still within reasonable occupancy in terms of absolute numbers. We are approaching, however, a concerning percentage of occupancy in terms of trend. And I can tell you that our hospitals are expressing significant concern about their occupancy level. And then, in terms of the number of hospitals reporting trouble acquiring personal protective equipment, we are not seeing that at this time. That said, however, private physician's offices and other private settings in terms, including long-term care organizations are beginning to struggle in this area. If we could move on to the next slide. To summarize all of this, this is kind of a dashboard summarizing overall where we are. And at this point, we are experiencing substantial community-level transmission. We would describe it at this point at a moderate burden, but increasing significantly, and in some areas, including Virginia Beach, increasing at a pretty rapid pace, a disturbingly rapid pace. Next slide. I'd like to go over just a few measures. Some of them will be for the region, and some of them will be locally from Virginia Beach. And this is a graph showing you a depiction of our cases by date reported in the eastern region over time. And as you can see from this, going far over to the right, we are beginning to see an upward slope. This, Virginia entered Phase 1 on May 15, which is marked here on the bottom of the slide. Big snap occurred May 26. We entered Phase 2 on June 5, and on July 1, we entered Phase 3. We started seeing in the eastern region an increase of probably around late Phase 2 into Phase 3. Some of that we would have expected as we reopen to have a slight increase, but now over time, as we begin to follow these measures, there is a concerning continued trend upward. Next slide. This is now a depiction of the number of people tested, and also reflecting that yellow line, the percent positivity that we're seeing in the region. And in the eastern region, the test positivity has started to decline, and overall for the region, it is at approximately 9.5%. It has been increasing since around 6.23. Next slide. Oh, the bottom, I'm sorry. If you could go back to the previous slide, in the bottom, we're looking at percent positivity there, and as you can see, we're really beginning to take a significantly upward turn. And this is a number of people tested, number of positive tests, 10% positivity. Next slide. And I wanted to show you a depiction of what is actually going on in Virginia Beach. And this is a graph of our number of cases by, by day as of June 13. Please ignore the downward slant at the very end, because we would still, we're still having numbers come in, and so that downward slant is actually an artifact. What I want you to focus on in the red is the upward curve, which is almost a vertical, complete vertical slant here, a horizontal. Our cases are increasing at a dramatically rapid pace. Next slide, please. Here, we see the number of hospitalizations in the eastern region, and again, it is showing an upward, upward curve. Next slide. Oh, the bottom, I'm sorry. If you could go back to the previous slide, in the bottom, we're looking at percent positivity there, and as you can see, we're really beginning to take a significantly upward turn. And this is a number of people tested, number of positive tests, 10% positivity. Next slide. And I wanted to show you a depiction of what is actually going on in Virginia Beach. And this is a graph of our number of cases by, by day as of June 13. Please ignore the downward slant at the very end, because we would still, we're still having numbers come in, and so that downward slant is actually an artifact. What I want you to focus on in the red is the upward curve, which is almost a vertical, complete vertical slant here, a horizontal. Our cases are increasing at a dramatically rapid pace. Next slide, please. Here, we see the number of hospitalizations in the eastern region, and again, it is showing an upward, upward curve. Next slide. And this is where I want to talk about what is going on in Virginia Beach. What are we seeing behind these numbers? And I'm not going to talk about all of the demographics that we have talked about previously, not seeing dramatic changes in most of those, but we are seeing a significant change in age. And what we have seen is a significant shift to a much younger age group in terms of those who are testing positive, and a dramatic spike, as you'll see, the second block, that gray represents individuals who are in the 20 to 29-year age group. We're also seeing increases in positive cases along, everyone under 40, but that dramatic spike at 20 to 29 years old. As we have looked at our case investigation to understand what we, what we are seeing going on that is causing our increase, there are certain features and trends that are clearly dramatically different with behavior recently as we have begun to open up. One thing that we, we are seeing, increased socialization, and this is among families in the private sector, and a lot of this centers around celebration, birthdays, holidays, Father's Day, backyard barbecue, socialization among families and friends. I think some of it has to do with feeling familiar with individuals, perhaps some of it being fatigue. As we talk about staying close within your household, some people may be interpreting family as meaning the extended family beyond the household, but it's very important that as we talk about safe practices, we understand that that core is the household that we can stay close to, but once we get out of our immediate household, we have to practice those public health measures as if everyone is a stranger, a member of the public off the street, because they have different risks than we do. The other part of what we are seeing, in addition to those private celebrations and get-togethers, is socialization among the young on the social scene, particularly around bar areas of restaurants and in restaurants that may have more of a club-like atmosphere, large gatherings, large groups of people in these areas. And we are focusing on that, and we'll be drilling down on a much higher, much heavier regulatory activity in that area. Next slide, please. This one just kind of shows you again that age distribution and how the age distribution, the age is decreasing over time from an average of 51 years to 44 years most recently. Next slide. And I wanted to break this one out for you and show that age stratified, this again is in Virginia Beach, age stratification over time. And as you can see, that yellow line moving up, that dramatic increase is in the 20 to 29-year-old age group. I might point out that most of these lines are going upwards. So we're seeing increased cases in almost all age groups, but a dramatic increase in that particular age group. And if we'll back, back a little bit, over to the right, is the same thing, looking at hospitalization. And again, not as dramatic an increase, these are young individuals, they're not as likely to have significant adverse outcomes as older individuals, but you will notice that the 20 to 29-year-olds are having some incremental increase in hospitalization as well, but it tends to impact the older age groups more. And this transmission, with the rate of transmission that we're seeing in the 20 to 29-year-old age group, as this continues, the expectation is the transmission will start moving into these other more vulnerable populations. As younger people bring this home, as they interact with other, whether close or extended family members who have health risks, or are in their extended family or circle of friends, and it begins to move into that population, we may start to see increased hospitalizations and deaths eventually as a result. Right now, and I'd add, in our case investigation, even though we're seeing this activity, when I talk about families and the gatherings and the celebration, in our case investigations, we are seeing large groups of an entire household who are turning out to be positive. So it's not just these, these youth, but it is also other family members, it is children, we're seeing toddlers, we're even seeing positive cases among infants as a result of family events and family celebrations where everyone is being placed at risk, they're not social distancing, they're not wearing masks, because they're comfortable and feel that there's not a need when they're interacting with people that they feel close to, but these are not all household members, these are large groups of people coming together. Next slide, please. So what is VDH doing? Unfortunately, I was in another meeting, so I did not get to hear the governor's most recent update, but we are increasing our emphasis on enforcing the governor's executive order. That includes our enforcement of compliance by businesses. We, we were encouraged to, as much as possible, educate before taking enforcement action. We will be moving more aggressively towards enforcement action to protect the community as we see what is happening in our community. Continued efforts to educate businesses and public around the preventive public health measures. We're enhancing our Public Health Response Act efforts with close monitoring of key indicators, and also adding staff to support these efforts. That is ongoing. We are enhancing testing throughout the community, focusing a lot from public health perspective on the at-risk, long-term care facilities, helping them with their outbreaks, as well as communities where access may be limited. We are planning for immunization. It is critical that we address back-to-school immunization. Some children may not, we know that more children are behind on their immunizations because of closures in non-essential healthcare services, but also critical, as much as possible, that we push flu vaccine this year, so we're not dealing with both types of outbreaks at the same time. We're supporting planning efforts of other agencies with their reopening plans and any plans to try to keep those organizations safe and to avoid outbreak. And we are also utilizing strike teams to address outbreaks and provide technical assistance to support high-risk settings, such as our congregate setting. Next slide, please. So in summary, Virginia Beach and the eastern region are experiencing a dramatic and disturbing increase in COVID-19 cases. We have returned to a level of widespread community transmission at a moderate level, the pace of which is rapidly advancing. There's been a significant shift to a younger population in cases, with the greatest proportion in the 20 to 29-year-old age group, and public health case investigations and observations show a major contributing factor is an increased socialization of extended, that is non-household family and friends, and large gatherings in bar areas of restaurants without observance of public health preventive measures, such as social distancing and face covering. Next slide, please. Well, I want to emphasize that we are all part of the solution here. What we each do personally and collectively matter. When I talked to you previously, and a shared model of the projections that we were looking very good, that we were going to keep our levels, or predicted to keep our levels well below hospital capacity, the one caveat that I mentioned was that all of this is dependent upon human behavior. Human behavior is the one element that we cannot comfortably predict. While that human behavior is critical now, it is a major factor in where we are, and it is going to be critical in terms of preventing us from moving further in the wrong direction and trying to reverse this disturbing trend. Case investigation and contact tracing along will not turn this tide. It really is dependent upon all of us. It's critical that we follow the public health preventive measures, that we avoid crowds. Unfortunately, those outside of our household, regardless of our level of comfort with them, do pose a risk and an increased risk of transmission. So those public health measures are critical. If, for young people who have to have some level of socialization, I would say, limit your circle as you can, keep your circle tight, and be sure to observe the public health measures that we're pressing in terms of social distancing, masking, hand hygiene, and all of the other measures that we have been, been talking about. Thank you. That's all I have for today, unless there are questions.
Thank you. Dr. Lindsay, we talked before you joined us today about the governor's comments regarding increased enforcement by the health, health directors, and we talked about various observations of people not social distancing and using masks and that sort of thing in restaurants and stores. And the question we had at that time was, do you have adequate resources to actually do the enforcement that the governor is apparently going to reinforce with you and your, and your fellow directors?
I think, you know, for, for this pandemic, resources will, are always... You know, for this pandemic, resources are always a challenge, but this is a priority and we will be directing the resources that we have to ensure that we do meet this enhanced effort. We will be looking to our partners. We appreciate the police in helping and being our eyes and ears. We're looking at our volunteer workforce to help us also in seeing and observing what is going on out in the community. And we will be partnering with other agencies such as ABC and BDAC to also assist and support us in this effort. So, we do intend to put whatever resources in addition to assistance from state to help support us.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know we had this discussion before. Does local law enforcement have the ability to enforce some of this stuff, or is it specifically carved out just for the health department?
It's been relied on by the executive orders that the health department would have enforcement responsibility, and I am not aware of a city or state ordinance that the local police department would be enforcing unless the conduct, for example, in the situation that you mentioned before, unless it turned into a trespass or something of that variety. There would have to be, in other words, there would have to be some local or state law or ordinance that was violated in order for the police department to undertake.
It's regulatory then, so the health department can go in and basically influence businesses based on regulations.
Right.
To the extent that they require a health permit, because I don't know that a hardware store requires a health permit, but I know like restaurants do, so.
Correct.
And Vice Mayor, I know-
Mr. Williams, I think you got some updates on our actions to date.
So, I did listen to the whole press conference for the governor. I know Dr. Lindsay was in between meetings. And so, the state health commissioner, Dr. Oliver, did address the resource issue and said that they would, I believe that the number was 100, more inspectors that they would look to hire and especially focusing on the Hampton Roads region.
Okay. Mr. Ralphs.
Sorry, I was listening, partly listening to the governor's speech about the local businesses, whether it's hardware stores or not, asking patrons to wear a mask. And if they didn't wear a mask, it's where they would be asked to leave, and if they didn't leave, then they would be essentially trespassing. So, I guess that's would be the violation of the state or local ordinance or code to warrant the police being called.
Yeah, but see, I guess my question is, there's got to be some method to encourage the businesses to actually tell people, put on your mask or social distance. And if the health department can't force them to do that, then they might not say, put on your mask or whatever. And I think that was my concern, but I understand what you're saying. It's just, I think it's getting to the first step.
Mr. Moss and then Ms. Henley.
Dr. Lindsay, I want to come back to the numbers and the trend line because there's two things. One, when you're declining, there's a latent effect, and when you're increasing, there's always a latent increase that's still coming. You mentioned in your comments that as those people, the 20, 29-year-old age bracket, as they're increasing numbers and as a percent, but as they also move about the community, that transfers to the other age groups. So, if you're looking at the modeling and knowing that there is some latency in seeing the positive results, what is the model showing based upon the current demographic and trend line that if you were to look seven days out, because there is a lag between infection and detection, is that number still increasing at an increasing rate? And what does the model say is the transference to other age groups as they interact in the community? I'm just trying to understand, you know, not what the snapshot is today, but what does the snapshot tell us what the governor's likely to see next Monday? And because this is very ominous in terms of what would be stronger action just around the corner, I'm just trying to understand what bends the curve in five days from now. And so, can you give me some insight as to what the model says we should, if we were forecasting on this, what we would see next Monday?
I have consulted with our modeling experts and essentially, they don't, the models, they don't shift, they don't have models that currently reflect the trend that we seem to have moved on. So, the last models I showed you are the most, probably the most up-to-date. Well, they have come out with some, perhaps some more updated models, but they are not reflecting this dramatic change that we've shown now. And it may take some time for them to kind of come up with those new trend lines.
Incentive to all the business community, not just the restaurant and, of course, it's called the hosting visitors industry, that, you know, that kind of thing, is that if these numbers stay the same or go up, I think we would expect that come Monday or next Wednesday, we would be going back to some phase other than phase three. So, if someone's wondering what the motivation is for the business, whether it's the Home Depot or the Walmart or whatever it is, is this whole community is going to be back in the economic locker room if this trend line continues. I mean, I don't know what other choice we would leave the governor. So, if you're asking the people out there listening that owns a, I don't care what kind of, whatever kind of hardware store or whatever kind of grocery store it is, that you have a vested interest in turning this trend line. Because if I was the governor and this kept going up, and I know what I would think I had to do in the following Monday or Wednesday, and it wouldn't be because I wanted to, it's because the numbers just tell you have no other choice. So, I think that's the strategic messaging from this event, is that we're all in the same boat and we need everybody's help, or it's going to be a lot of business lost.
Yep. Ms. Henley.
And I guess maybe this is a question for Mr. Stiles. I'm thinking in terms of our city meetings, and we do have some planned public hearings and meetings that have the potential of having large groups of people or even coming into this building for public hearings or public meetings. Do we have the authority to say, you don't come in to this meeting if you don't have
Up until recently, I would have said to you, and I think this is probably still the correct answer, that the governor's order requires masks but contains several exemptions that would be hard to monitor or determine if those exemptions applied without asking questions that we as local government typically would not ask for medical privacy reasons. So, I think our position has been that we ask and strongly encourage people to wear the masks, but we have not been asking people not to enter if they contend that there's a reason why they cannot wear the mask.
But now that we have exceeded that 10% positivity rate, you know, we're really at that point where we, I think we have to be firm because at the rate this has gone up just in the last week is, to me, alarming. And as John said, I mean, if we don't take action to control it, talk about our economic impact to all of our businesses and so forth again, and all that we have done just is wasted, it's all going to be back again. So, somehow, I think we have to show that we're serious, and if we just sort of let folks know that if you want to come to city facilities, you bring your mask. But I think if you've got a doctor's appointment or you're going to the hospital for a treatment, they tell you, you don't come into this building without a mask on. So, I think they're pretty serious and they get results. And I think we're going to have to set the standard.
Anybody else? Ms. Abbott and then Ms. Woben.
Mark, I have a question about some of the things I've been experiencing on when I go to other places in the community. For example, when I took my son to his well checkup, they screened us for fevers, they asked us our symptoms, they required us to wear a mask, they had PPE available and, you know, hand sanitizer. I mean, we were, it was like lock and key, walking into the pediatrician's office for a well visit. So, of that type of stuff that I'm seeing in other places, how much of that are we permitted to do as a local government? Are we allowed to do any kind of screening like that?
I have, we have not been actively doing that. Whether, I would think we would have more authority to do that if the health department or the governor mandated it. We are, as government, we are more limited in what we can do than what private enterprise can do. Again, I'm not sure that we're having a lot of problems with getting people to voluntarily wear face masks when coming into this building. I've not been made aware that that has been a significant problem. We have not evaluated in the level of detail that perhaps we should, whether we can do or should be doing other screening methods in addition to that, but we can go back and look at that.
I think, if I could just make a comment to the body, I would like to know what we're permitted to do reasonably. And more importantly, I'm really concerned about our two large public hearings coming up, and I honestly think we should discuss a contingency plan and start preparing the public now for what they can expect when they come to this meeting, if we in fact have it and we're not rolled back at all. Because, I mean, to John's point, if these are up and it's a, you know, it's a two-week delay before we know anybody's really sick or, you know, how much of this has kind of plumed outwards, I don't know what we're going to do, and we have to hear comments on two very contentious applications. So, and perhaps we only are discussing it for like the convention center hearings where we, I just would like to know what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do and how we can be as efficient as possible.
Okay. Ms. Woben.
So, along those same lines, I certainly share the concerns of my colleagues who have spoken previously. As Ms. Henley has stated, I do believe we do need to be firmer on, you know, what guidelines or the guidelines as people come into our local government buildings. I think I only saw maybe one person attend our meeting without a mask, and it seemed to me that with everyone else wearing a mask, that person would have, you know, complied and felt compelled to comply with the guidelines. However, I guess my concern is just, you know, is there a way that we can proactively maybe set up stations, you know, in certain areas with hand sanitizer? And also, you know, maybe offering masks if a person doesn't have it? I mean, I've been to places where, you know, there, people will offer, they'll say, well, I see you don't have a mask, here's one. And then you don't have to ask a series of questions, but you're kind of being proactive to say, this is what we have available. So, I would also agree with Councilmember Abbott. I would like to know what we can do because, you know, I'm receiving communication from people who are asking us what we're going to do. Are we going to, you know, be firm? Are we going to present some type of legislation that requires people to wear a mask? So, we should have a response, and I believe we should also, as Ms. Henley said, set the standard because, you know, people are looking at leadership and they're looking at how we conduct meetings. And if we don't enforce the guidelines, you know, people tend to not, to look at what they see, not do what you say. They look at what they see us do. And so, I certainly, along with my colleagues, would like to see what we can do. I particularly like how we, as a body, came up with that first PSA announcement. I think it might either, would be good if we maybe came up with another one that potentially says, listen, you know, we have the results, they're increasing, we want to make sure you're following the guidelines, let's continue to work on this, we're not out of the woods yet, so let's continue to do this, do it together, but remember, we need to follow the guidelines. I think that would be helpful. I thought the first one was helpful, so maybe that's something we can look at.
Those are, you know, things where, you know, are under consideration. Now, the other thing, you know, one of the, you know, less logistical challenging things are, you know, when you go to places, they check your temperature, you know, that is one of the, and they did that, and the instruments that they have now are touchless. And then we've also, you know, even, you know, when we went out on a trip to look at the off-site, you know, turbines, you know, we had to get a temperature test and fill out a questionnaire that, you know, documenting our thing and also some form of type of release. Now, I'm just wondering if those type of screens, you know, they're, you know, they're efficient, but, you know, but once again, you know, if we can have a table outside, especially if we go to the convention center where people are coming in, and then also list the rules of social distancing, I'm sure that we're going to have the chairs probably placed, you know, efficiently, you know, to maintain that, but also make the rules known at those type of public, you know, to, you know, address, you know, Council ladies' Abbott's, you know, concerns. So, Mark, if you can look into that stuff, you know, because once again, I think, you know, we're operating under the governor's executive order, correct? And, you know, that does, you know, give us some constraints. Is that understood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Ms. Lee.
The comment of the public hearings at the convention center, it's been mentioned a couple of times, I don't know how many people have been down there, but there is, the setup is very, very good for, to accommodate 200 people, all spread apart, more, in some cases, more than six feet per person. So, it's, it has good spacing. If everybody would wear masks, that plus the spacing will be a pretty good mitigation if they'll do that.
Good. Appreciate that, sir. Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Lindsay at all? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Most appreciated. Good discussion.
Tom.
Okay.
Doing web acts down there, too. Just want you to know.
Well, next up, I believe, is city council discussion and-
Okay. Steve Kovar.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, Deputy City Manager Steve Kovar to give you a public safety update.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to take just a few minutes and give you a quick public safety update from the weekend. But I would offer to you, when you, when you think about enforcement, a good friend of mine that's in the audience, Chief Zaccaro, and his personnel in the police department use the moniker "fair, firm, and friendly" as they're dealing with folks at our oceanfront particularly over the years. So, I just offer that to you. So, a quick public safety update from this past week, the oceanfront crowds were large over the weekend, but for the most part, very peaceful. The beaches were crowded and lots of folks came out, so we enjoyed seeing folks come out and being very peaceful. On Friday, we did have, we did have the, as I look across all of public safety, I'm going to give you a quick up-brief on some of the issues that we did have, some of the incidents that did occur. As Ms. Henley pointed out, the, in the 3600 block of Sandfiddler Road, we did have a deck collapse off of a fairly large house there that did have some 20 people on that deck, according to the EMS report that I read. There were five people injured, four were transported, and two of those that were transported had serious injuries. We also, that was about 6:00 in the evening, we also had a vehicle hit a pedestrian at 69th and Atlantic, and unfortunately, that resulted in a fatality. On Saturday, we had a very peaceful protest at the town center area. at the town center area. And unfortunately, during about that same timeframe, we had a reported dumpster fire in that area. And as it turns out, there was a, there was a body located inside of that dumpster. So that's currently under investigation, but sad timing there. Sunday, there were two more additional house fires, one at 7:00 PM. We had a townhouse fire in Green Run with extension into one of the exposures, the adjoining townhomes there, damaged two units. And then about 9:30 PM Sunday evening, we had a garage fire in the Foxfire neighborhood with pretty significant damage. As, as you all are aware, there is a, a march planned for this afternoon here on the complex. I've got Chief Sakaro in the room with me, should there be any questions on that. But it's our understanding that that event was permitted. The, the folks are going to gather at the school administration parking lot, walk down James Madison Boulevard, Prince of San, take a right-hand turn on Prince of San Road in front of Police Headquarters, and make their way back, excuse me, into the complex and, and come here to, to City Hall. We also are getting, getting some preliminary intelligence through social media that there is a potential for a, another protest on Atlantic Avenue Friday evening of this week. So with that, I'll take any questions, and I've got the Chief here as well.
And then Ms. Wilson.
Sambridge.
Yes, ma'am.
I continue to get calls from people that say, you know, the parking, the illegal parking down there is quite a problem. I know that after we got the signs up on the weekend of the 4th, I know that we had those digital signs up, but I think maybe they're not used. But we now, but apparently, it's just an ongoing thing. I think that all the locals know that if you want to go to the beach, you really need to go to Sand Bridge, and we know we've got a limited parking. And I think, again, this weekend, the weather forecast is to be really nice. If letting people know when the parking is full is, I think, a plus, if it's something we can do on an ongoing basis. But I've particularly been getting calls that there's a lot of illegal parking on those side streets down by Little Island Park. I think Little Island Road and Rock Lane particularly are two that I've had mentioned with people who just park there. The roads are very narrow, but there are pedestrians that need to walk on those roads. And with parking along the sides of those roads illegally, the pedestrians don't feel safe. So this ongoing issue of illegal parking at Sand Bridge, I'm still continuing to hear about, so.
Okay. I know that we have increased the patrols and the enforcement there, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for Ms. Wilson?
Yes. Thank you so much, Steve. I'm happy to hear that this afternoon is, is permitted. So what are we doing about the events that are not permitted, like the one that we're hearing about Friday night? That's, at this time, is not permitted. Is that correct?
It, it has not been that, that we're aware of at this point. So it's my understanding that the numbers come into play. So less than 150 people, they can, they can march and protest, but, but they cannot come into the streets. You know, so that's, that's the direction that, that we've given them. I know Chief Sakaro and his staff have, have gone out of their way to try to meet with the organizers beforehand, and I'm sure they will continue to, to research and try to reach out so that we can explain to the organizers what the rules are.
And we read in the paper that the, that Hampton had a situation that they got off the sidewalks and marched into the streets, and, and they, the organizers were, were charged because they didn't follow the rules.
Yes, ma'am. So in our planning process, we have contingencies for that as well.
Uh-huh. And so I think the streets are made for the cars unless they're permitted.
Yes, ma'am.
And...
And, and, and it's like, it's like we tell, we stress to the, to the organizers, we are there to protect not only the citizens and visitors, but we're also there to protect the protesters.
Right.
So it's nice to have a good idea of where they are, so we can create that buffer to keep them safe.
Well, we have to be guardians and be safe for everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for Steve Cover? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as part of our initiative to encourage council conversation on issues germane to individual council members, our first item of business was a request, as we know, the General Assembly is going back into session in August, and there was a request for an update and discussion. So we got Bob Mathias is going to come, you know, to find out, you know, what may be forthcoming and what we may be able to do as a body. Welcome, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, glad to be here today. Drop anything all over the place, huh? Get old, you have hearing age, and they pull out with a mask. We, when the General Assembly wrapped up the session, about the 13th of March, we left the General Assembly, and they had made tremendous plans to spend a pretty large amount of money on new initiatives that the Democratic majority had decided were important. Plus, they were looking at very substantial increases in revenue. Right after we left the session, the COVID-19 issue came up, and immediately, the General Assembly was talking about a $2 billion shortfall in the current fiscal year and an unknown amount for the next fiscal year. That amount went down by the veto session that they had in April, where they basically unallocated a tremendous amount of money, of the new money, the new expenditures. But they were still looking at a billion-dollar shortfall. Fast forward to last June, they were down to $600 million in shortfall. And last week, they came up and reported they were looking at about a $230 million shortfall in the existing fiscal year. That actually comes out very favorably. Over the last 20 years, they've had a deviation, plus or minus, of meeting their budget of 1.3%. The $230 million roughly is a 1.1 difference. So they were within the ballpark, even with all the COVID-19 issues, of meeting their revenues. I'm not sure how they account for the federal money, but you have to remember, just like us, they can only spend that on, directly on COVID-19 things like PPE, rent relief, job loss of revenue, things like that. So that's sort of outside of their revenue forecasting. What's going to happen with the next fiscal year? Sales are up pretty much across the board. Sales taxes are doing well, gas taxes back up. Some of y'all follow the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission actions, and they had to reforecast their revenue based on COVID-19 impacts. And some states have seen like a 30% or 40% decrease in gasoline tax increases, or gasoline tax revenues. And their HRTAC has been able to successfully reforecast their revenues, and they're keeping a, a good bond rating. The General Assembly is slated to go back in the money committees anyway on August 18th. And that's when the governor will give them the end of the fiscal year report. It will not yet include, though, a new reforecast, although they will do a reforecast, but it won't include the official forecast. That won't come till later in the year when they prepare the budget in October, when the budget comes out in, in December. So we're looking probably two or three or four days after the 18th meeting, the joint meeting of the money committees, for the General Assembly to be called back in. As you know, they can only take up measures that are part of the call. Obviously, going after the budget issues will be part of the call. But the Democratic caucus is also demanding that they look at law enforcement reform, things like, things like we've already done, like outlawing chokeholds, decriminalizing some actions, perhaps doing away with parole, or bringing parole back in, rather, decriminalizing some actions and other things like that. We just don't know at this time what those actions are going to be, and we don't know if the members are going to be limited to how many bills they can put in. Probably the bills that are going to get the most traction are the ones that the governor puts forward and gets selected members of the General Assembly to patron. And so there's a lot of unknown at this time. The money piece looks much better. There was an article in Washington Post yesterday about Congress has 21 legislative days, 20 now, to get something done or additional relief for localities. And states and localities are really pushing the members of Congress very, very hard to get some direct relief down to localities and to the states to make up for losses of revenue. As, as Mr. Moss has said, there are some members of the Senate especially pushing back, saying we shouldn't bail out states that have mismanaged their money. I don't think Virginia is one of those states that has managed money. We've got an excellent reserve fund. They actually created a couple of years ago a secondary reserve fund in addition to the rainy day fund. So they're probably going to be in very good shape financially, unless the COVID-19 drops another big shoe on, on our parade. So a lot of uncertainty, but I'm actually very sanguine about how the budget for the Commonwealth is going to turn out. We'd obviously like to get some of the money let loose again for support of Building Two, for instance, and some of the other issues that were a high priority for both y'all and the General Assembly during the last session.
Okay, any questions for, yes?
Mr. Mathias is right. You know, Texas, Virginia, and especially Alaska are known as the welfare states, because they get about a buck 70 for every dollar they put into the federal treasury because of defense spending principally. So I think we ought to give a lot of credit to the federal government for how healthy our economy really is. It's a, it's a lot of, the defense budget has been high, the defense expenditures have been high, and they're stable. So I, we're very fortunate. I think that explains a lot. We're not very manufacturing intense, so we don't see all the layoffs. We're not, we don't have any major headquarters. But the same token, when the economy bounces back, we never see the bounce either. So there's a silver lining there, but there's also, the upside is low, especially in our region. So I think that's all good. Do you know how many days that the General Assembly is going to be?
They have not decided yet, sir. And, and sort of reiterate, it's sort of a known that Virginia is slow to go into recessions, but we're slow to come out of recessions, as Mr. Moss says. You know, the feds are looking at a 3% salary increase for defense personnel in the upcoming fiscal year. That has tremendous ripple effects through Hampton Roads, as you might imagine. Their housing allowances are going up. Again, that has tremendous ripple effects through the economies. So no, sir, I don't, they're probably going to stay in a week. They'll go in, the governor, and I'm, I'm just forecasting, guessing here, spitwadding, as it were, they'll, the governor will probably issue the call the day of the money committees. They'll come back a couple of days later. The government will give them a revised budget. They will then have to take that to the various budget committees. We're very fortunate, we have conferees on the House budget side with several, several members of our delegation actually are conferees. They'll take that into committee. The other bills will go to, like, Courts of Justice Committee and things like that. They'll still have to go through the committee process, which takes four days, two or three days for each side's committee to enact legislation and send it to the other side. So you're probably looking at a week or so anyway. They could go in for four or five days, go back home for a week, and then come back for three or four days.
Thank you very much.
Hey, anybody else for Bob? Yeah, Bob, you know, let me say, thank you for the update, because obviously, what happens in Richmond obviously affects us down here. And I know it's challenging now getting people together, but in discussions with the school board and, you know, just improving, you know, the, you know, even just getting the legislative package together, you know, having perhaps some type of meeting or engagement with this body, with the school board, with our legis, our delegation prior to, so they understand, you know, some of the impacts and priorities going forward. So, you know, I know, once again, with the limitations of getting people together, that might be a challenge. But I think it's important going forward that, you know, we reestablish those connections, you know, with the three main bodies that affect Virginia Beach so much. So can you comment on what we might be able to do, what might be feasible?
I would think we probably need to wait till after the special session and see how that rolls out. And then we can start working towards a meeting as soon after that as possible. We are trying to work up a video conference for the new city manager and the General Assembly delegation, though. He's, I had a chance to talk to him several weeks ago, and he's very eager to, to meet them, even if it's through photons rather than in person.
Yeah, you know, yes.
Now, it's interesting. It's not important that we meet with the General Assembly delegation, even if it's by photons before the session, but it's, it's important that the city manager, I have a hard time understanding why our local members, reps to the General Assembly, I think they would, wouldn't have time to have a discussion with us, but yet you think it's important that the city manager does. But the political representation for the community is us. I have a, that's a contradiction of terms, so I suggest that you, I will do my own independent...
I'd surely misspoke, Mr. Moss. I apologize for misspeaking. But we'll, we'll certainly, if y'all'd like to get with the delegation electronically before the special session, we can make that happen.
But...
I think it's something we should, I just think something we should pursue. I think they should hear from us. I'm glad that they're meeting with the city manager, but the last time I checked, we're the people that represent the residents of Virginia Beach that they represent. I think they'd like to hear from us.
And if this can be done on a periodic basis, you know, even throughout the year. You know, I know they go to the session, but, you know, it seems that our challenges are multiplying out here with stormwater and, you know, school modernization and replacement and, you know, things of that nature. You know, just to have an ongoing dialogue, not just, you know, the periodically, you know, that short window of time, to have that ongoing dialogue. And, you know, to include this, you know, the school board, too. And, you know, I just think it just makes sense, you know, going forward, so everybody is on the same page, you know, going forward, as Hampton Roads, or we as Virginia Beach, you know, compete for those limited resources. So it might be in our best interest, Bob.
Certainly. We'll make that happen, sir. We would have met with them by now, y'all would have met with them by now. We had certainly scheduled something, but with the COVID-19, it's, it's just been sort of difficult to get folks together.
Right. But, you know, okay, but, you know, obviously, you know, whatever we can do to enhance communication, I think would benefit all. Ms. Henley?
Thinking about our legislative package, and I guess now is the time when we start to come forward with what we want in that. Do you have any kind of a synopsis of what we did not achieve in the last session that we might want to?
We put it in your package on Friday.
Yes.
The, the, y'all had a very successful session with the General Assembly last year. I think your long-term items, you got about 93% of them.
But I'm thinking in terms of, as you were saying, regionally. I know with, with the Plannin District, and I'm on the Coastal Resilience Committee, we were thinking to meet in early August to come up with what we might want to put forth regionally, particularly with something like the, the resilience, the stormwater things that affect this region, but maybe not others so much. So I think we really need to start thinking about what we're going to put in the overall package that we need to achieve, that we haven't yet achieved.
Our Hampton Roads caucus is having a joint meeting on August 26, electronically. You got it in your notes for the PDC, TPO, HRTAC meeting that was at your desk today. So that'll be, everybody can join that electronically and see where they're willing to go.
Okay. Mr. Moss?
I'd just like to pick up on that, because there were some things that came from regional groups that, that we never knew were coming, and so we couldn't include an opinion or at least have a discussion on those. One was the regional recordation tax for mass transit, a dedicated source of revenue. That was, went out of HRT, but that never, we never knew that came. We never had that discussion on this by to take a position. So since it wasn't a legislative package, you shouldn't have been promoting it nor negativity about it. But we need to know what those things are, so we can decide whether, as a body, we adopt or believe in the no plastic bag tax. Those things, we never see, though someone knows them, because they're going to those meetings, but they never come back to us to see whether or not, as a body, we really agree with the regional position. But we get credit for something we never took a position on.
Or blame.
Well, that's true. Either way, it's, I just...
Yeah, the HRT recordation tax, that was actually a deal done in the governor's office with two members of the delegation from Hampton Roads. And they made up their mind what they were going to do, and they were not to be dissuaded from that.
Hey, now, then, we could have expressed our opinions. Hey, now, we could have expressed our opinions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Mr. Mathias, thanks for everything you do. Stellar work.
Okay, at the request of a couple of council members, they were arrested at a discussion on potential November referendum items, okay? Ms. Abbott, would you like to get things rolling?
Sure will. Everyone should have received this at least three times now, but I, Mr. Stiles graciously printed off fresh copies for us. I want to discuss the question. It is my intent to put this on our next agenda to vote on. I'll just kind of start off where I'm at. For those listening, we're discussing the district voting for the seven district council member seats. As I've brought up in the past, it's my, my position that we haven't had a referendum on the subject matter since 1996. And over the weekend, I did a little bit of research, and 62% of our current electorate has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this issue as to whether or not they think we should continue the current at vote, at-large voting system, or we should consider the district voting system in some capacity. Of course, that's something the General Assembly has to make a decision for us, but I think it's important that we put it on the November, the November ballot for a referendum to at least get a updated pulse on how our community feels, considering it has been a considerable, well, it's been 24 years since the last time we asked. So with that, I, I think we can open it up for discussion.
Okay, any comments? Mr. Moss.
I've been around on this issue a long time, going back to the first one, 1994. I, I do support it. I know a lot of people say that we have to educate people and have a long education process, and a presidential election year is the wrong time, but I think I've said before, we had a great turnout for the light rail referendum, which was in a presidential year, and people didn't have any trouble finding it down ballot. As a matter of fact, more people voted for that than in some of the council races itself. And they certainly gave us a strong feedback, and I think we often underestimate just how informed the public really is. And when we ask them something that they care about, they participate a lot more than when we don't. And history across the country shows that referendums generally drive up voter participation because people know that their vote makes a difference, and often they don't always perceive that. I do think we should have the public hearing, at least a meeting before we vote, and I know we have until August 9th to adopt it, so I would encourage that Ms. Abbott, that we have a public hearing prior to actually having to vote the following meeting. I think that's kind of like what our process is, and even when it's affected me, I've tried to follow that, even though it's expediencing. I think we have time to still make this. I don't think it's detrimental. I did have discussions with the city attorney even earlier than this. This isn't prejudicial to another situation that we face, which is publicly known, since it's in the federal courts, so this doesn't compromise or jeopardize that, that litigation that's in place. So I think that's a thing also in its favor. And I also think that we do need to hear from the public, and I think we should never be afraid of what the public says. And I don't think we'll have any shortage of people on each side of this issue expressing their opinion. And I don't think we're disadvantaged by people not being informed. They'll probably be more informed on this than maybe some of the candidates that they vote for on election day, and no one says, I don't consider my election legitimate because people weren't well-informed. I've never seen that yet. So I'm not afraid of the public. I think this is, there'll be a robust debate. I think it will give us something to, to talk about structural change, and this might not be the only structural change downstream that we do. It's well in advance of the census that's taking place now, that will be reported out in '21. I think then that's going to come out, and we'd be doing redistricting. So this is good timing. I think we always want to ask these kinds of questions when the turnout is the highest because I think it gives the greatest legitimacy to the outcome, and people would be, would be smart not to bet on what that outcome would be. I think the public has shown that they make up their own mind, and they, they're pretty good at deciphering what their own thoughts are and how it benefits or not benefits them, and I think they look sometimes what it means for the city or not. So I, I look forward to the public hearing on this, Ms. Abbott, and to my peers, and I look forward to giving this choice. And I hope that as we move forward, that this council, I think there are other choices that, on major policy questions, that are, that are value choices about our community, that we give the voters an opportunity to express themselves. I know this body didn't want, well, not this body, but a former body majority didn't want to hear from the public on light rail, and it took a petition referendum to get their voice heard. I think that didn't reflect well on us because we were stifling their voice being heard, and when it got a chance to be heard, it was a voice that some didn't want to hear. And we may hear that here also. People might say, I like the status quo. Often the status quo has a lot of inertia in its favor, but at least you get the issue adjudicated, and the people who own the government ought to have the right to say whether they think it's time for a change. So I wholeheartedly support the question, and I wholeheartedly empower the people to have their voice heard.
Mr. Mayor.
What's on the ballot other than, so we've got the president, Senate, the House, mayor, council, school board?
Same as the light rail referendum, same number of offices.
Is there, is there a state referendum on there?
There's no constitutional question I'm aware of. For the state, that's what you're referring to?
I don't know. I thought there was. I don't know. Does anybody on the staff know this answer?
Perhaps not here.
Yeah, the change in the, in the.
Redistricting.
Yeah, that's, that's just requires a vote of the General Assembly again before it goes to referendum.
So that does not, so that, that's next time?
Next time.
Because that's the one I heard, was bipartisan. So is that on or not?
Well, I'm with him. I think it's the next time around.
No, it's not. It has to, before it goes to referendum, the General Assembly has to vote it for a second time. So, Mr. Mathias, I believe you would know, but I'm pretty sure that's right.
That the pass this very same wording and have an intervening election before the General Assembly, something like that, some kind of odd wording, but it's got to pass twice.
I don't think it's on the ballot this year.
Yeah, and I, I'm just curious about that because the longer the ballot, the worse it gets downstream. You know, I don't disagree that if something like this is heard, it needs to be done during a presidential election. I, I would, I would say this is not even remotely like the light rail referendum because the difference there frankly was there's a grassroots group of people that, that wanted to defeat it, and we heard from them constantly, nonstop, nonstop, nonstop. And I, I haven't heard anybody mention this issue except from Ms. Abbott in, in years about this. I mean, I just really haven't. But that, that doesn't mean it's, it's not something that, that we could certainly vote on to whether or not we add it to the ballot. I, I just, I do worry about the impact of, and I know with all due respect to Mr. Moss, I think there is an education component to this based on what Ms. Abbott said regarding the fact that we've had this system for quite some time. It's actually been, court cases notwithstanding, it's been proven repeatedly to be legal, and, and, and there has, it's, it's been several times, I'm sure Jessica knows how many times the, the referendum have, have passed in favor. So I, I would, my concern frankly is, is the impact of the ability not to, well, maybe, maybe we are allowed to depending upon which way it rolls, having, having large meetings and public meetings to talk about it. Otherwise, it's just going to be an issue debated on social media, and, and there will likely not be as many opportunities to discuss it, but, but, you know, that's just my opinion. Just a couple of stream of consciousness comments here, nothing really.
Okay, Mr. Tower, Mr. Rouse, and then Ms. Wilson.
My only concern about this is frankly that the way it's worded, it seems to me that if council adopts it, it is adopting a pro-change resolution because the justification is all for changing it. There's no justifications in here for keeping what's there. And certainly there are justifications for at-large voting systems. The evils, if you want to call them that, of borough or district voting, including log-rolling, including trading, trading off things that don't support the public interest by diverting attention to local projects that never would have, never, that aren't necessary and wouldn't get adopted, but for an incumbent using or being feeling he needed, he or she needed to do that in order to woo, woo district, just so that we've got one of everything in every district type idea. There are some problems with that, and I just think if we're going to have a resolution that we put before the voters, we ought to be a little more neutral about the pros and cons of it in the same sort of conditional sense that the wording is here. I don't have any problems per se with the wording that is here. It's just what's not here in terms of giving kind of the other side of the story, and I would, I'd like to see if we can get, come up with some language that has a more balanced view. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, talking about for the specific question.
Yeah, for the, in the, in the lead-in to the, to the resolution and how we publicize it, because this is what people are going to be looking at, and I'm just think, if we're going to get, put out some reasons that you might want to consider a change to the public, we probably ought to put out some reasons that the, some of which, as George just mentioned, but there are others as well that I mentioned, just to give a fair, a fair hearing. And my comment on that really reflects my own feelings about it, which are really, I did hear about it during, when I was running for election. It became clear to me that people didn't understand, many, many people do not understand the current system. They are confused because they don't realize it's an at-large system. They just know who, who they vote for. They get in, and they find it out when they get in the ballot box, and then 10 minutes later, they've forgotten until the next year. But I saw, and I do hear people talking about that, that aspect of it.
Okay, Ms. Abbott to rebut, and then Mr. Rouse, and then Ms. Wilson.
Guy, I appreciate your comments. So I just want to clarify because you're okay with the way the question itself is worded, correct?
Yeah, it's the, it's the.
It's this, it's this back, it's the background consideration section?
I think the question is presented fairly.
Okay.
It's the background.
So I am completely open to however it's presented here. This is not, I don't, I mean, I like how the question's worded, if there's, if there are members that feel the question can be reworded to better present, I'm open to that.
Same here.
But the, the background and consideration, I'm completely fine. And I agree, there are pros and cons to the at-large voting system, the hybrid that we implement to some degree, and then, you know, there's, well, and there's ton, there's so much literature on the subject matter. So I mean, I'm, I'm open to being more holistic on the, this top page, if you will, so that it's a little more fairly represented for sure. And then in terms of the educational component, I don't think that much has to be done outside of having some kind of landing page that says, here are the pros and cons, and, you know, make your decision. I, I've seen, I've looked at many of the public, or the pub, the, the informational pieces that many cities have done when they've put these referendums out, and they're pretty cut and dry. There, there's not a lot to them outside of a simple one-page sheet that says, here's why you might like it, here's why you might not, and that'd be that. And I certainly don't, I do think that there are more people interested in this issue than we probably hear about. I think the, the problem is, is that with 25% of our voters being Gen Xers, 27% of our voters being millennials, and 10% of our voters coming on in 2020 are Gen Z, I, I don't think they really have, I, I don't think they, like, like, I can't remember if it was Jim or Guy who said it, they don't know that they're voting for everybody until they get in the voting box. And that, and that, that is where I always hear, oh, well, I didn't know we could vote, or I didn't know we were doing it this way. And, and it, for better or for worse, I want to know what this group of people has to say because they haven't had a chance to weigh in.
Okay, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo some of the sentiments of Mr. Abbott and Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower. I think if we're going to present background information on the top sheet, it should be more neutral. I do think we should ask the public what they think, and this is a very interesting and subject that comes up all the time in the community, and I'm out of the community a lot. And this is a subject whether they know or not how the voting system is, is in place, or the pros and cons of a district voting, or the at-large system. But this is talked about quite often. I hear it more, more seldom than not, a lot of times in the community because they just, either they don't understand, or they don't know, or they do know, and they want to, they want to voice their concerns for the way the, the voting is now, the way we vote in Virginia Beach now. So this is a highly talked about subject, and I would say we, we put it to the people to decide because we do have, I think the average age in Virginia Beach now is 36 years old, so we have a completely new, different generation who may have a difference of opinion.
Great, thank you. Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Wood. Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Look down here.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Being an at-large person doesn't affect me as much, but I have to agree with Mr. Wood. I haven't heard an outpouring, like, like light rail was highly controversial, and people really, either they really wanted it or they really didn't, and there hasn't been an outpouring of this. But my biggest concern is the timing of this during a pandemic where, who knows if we're going to be rolling back to phase two in smaller groups and this election cycle, if we're going to be even having forums and, and the difficulty of people getting together and information. And I've never seen an election period like this as, as all of y'all, and I'm just very, very concerned of, of this particular election. And I know it's the presidential, and even some of the presidential candidates are having a hard time getting out to, to groups. So I just wanted to say I have a concern of the timing of this election during the pandemic.
Ms. Henley.
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Moss that we need to have a public hearing before we think we're going to vote on this. This is not just a simple little what's your opinion. This will totally change our city for the future. And I think something of this magnitude needs a tremendous amount of public discussion. And it's not as simple as I think it's being made to sound. And I think we really need, before we totally change our system of government, which will affect not only the city council, but also the school board, and really a lot of things that we do, I think it, it needs a lot of public discussion, and I don't think there's time to even let people know that we're thinking about this for a public hearing next week and a vote the following week or something of that nature. I think people are going to be totally surprised that we were even contemplating this. I know it's been discussed by this body off and on a lot, but I really have not heard it since the last election, when people say, well, do I vote for everybody? But then everybody seems fine with it. I think to change our system of government demands a tremendous amount of public discussion and debate. And again, as Rosemary was just saying, we can't even get together for a small little discussion now about anything. And to do it during this time with a pandemic is not the time to do it. And with this controversial presidential election coming on, it's even a less good time to get people thinking about our city. So if we're thinking about the good of the city of Virginia Beach, that's what I think we have to put first. What is the best for the city of Virginia Beach? And I think that demands a tremendous amount of discussion, not simply a vote on a resolution next week. I just don't think that's going to be the right route if you're truly concerned about the city of Virginia Beach and its future.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about a, you know, public hearing next week on this, correct? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Moss.
I yield Mrs. Sabrina, Mrs. Wooton, because she hasn't spoken.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I certainly want to, again, affirm my support on asking this question. I remember when I was campaigning in 2018, it was a huge issue. And I affirm my support then, and I affirm my support now. And additionally, there was a, excuse me, a recent survey that went out to the public, and if I. I do recall, the percentage was around 71%, that people were interested in addressing the question on a referendum. So I understand the timing, and the timing, we might want to consider the timing, but I do want to go on record as confirming my support.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moss.
Well, you know, it's interesting, this country had elections during the Civil War, during the flu, Spanish Flu pandemic, during World War II, during the Great Depression, and it's amazing how resilient the public was, and they were able to exercise discerning judgment and make people, we think they're more than qualified to vote for us, you know, in an election, but somehow, with sometimes not very much information, and sometimes not with always the most constructive conversations, but they seem to, but we don't seem to somehow look at the election results and say, you know, that wasn't a very well-educated public, maybe we should do this again. And we aren't suggesting to not have elections, because I don't think that would be the right answer, although I heard some, not here, but other places. So I think we do a disservice to our bosses by, by underestimating their common sense. I mean, there's been referendums in California about dinoide nuclear energy, they got defeated. Other things work. I think that the wisdom that is in the body politic exceeds the wisdom of the 11 people on this dais. Now, constructively, we can't have every rezoning and have a referendum, obviously, but this is a question about how people want to be governed. And do they fundamentally want a district system where they have their district member? And when someone talks about, is there a horse trading, and does every district have to have something? Count the number of community centers. I know, Sabrina, we stole all you want. I've forgotten. But you can look at this body, and if you looked at it, there's a lot of district behavior here, except how we're elected. What does the district member say? Oh, the district member gets briefed before everybody else. Sometimes the at-large ones are the last to know. So all the behavior piece, it comes down to, in the end, a choice of the customer. Would they prefer to have a dedicated person that they can hold accountable within their district? It is a fundamental change, and on that, I don't disagree. But I think the customers can understand that. I mean, they understand, there's lots of things that they make, that they don't even get as much input on as that, that they get stuck with, with mortgage applications, or filling out these rent subsidy forms we give them. But I think we, we really underestimate, if we're willing to applaud the people when we serve because they put us here, those are the same people we should be applauding to have the same discerning judgment to make this choice. I wouldn't care if the resolution just says, put this question on the ballot and contained no pros and cons, because, believe me, the people without us will speak up. They don't need us to tell them whether they want to change or they don't. So I could go with a resolution, should we put this question on the ballot in November and have no narrative? Because the people don't need to be told the pros and cons. We don't put out resolutions with pros and cons for each of us, we have to do our own campaigning. So I think that the people that have the sides on this issue will fill the vacuum, you know, and, and make their own choices. So I'm very proud of our voters. We talk about how much participation we get, the volunteerism of our community, and how they come out and participate at these public hearings that we have on various different topics. And then, those aren't the same people that are still voting in this November, those are those same people committed to the beach, committed to their community. And do we really think that they're, that they're not going to be discerning? I think they are. And like I said, I wouldn't be forecasting or putting any Las Vegas bets on what the outcome would be, because our voters are so discerning, they make up their own minds. And I think the only way we can honor them maybe best is, Mr. Mayor, my peers, is to not have a resolution, except to be, here's the wording of the ballot, place it on there, and let the marketplace, not government, tell them what the pros and cons are. People will educate themselves. We don't need to be in that business, because this is a political choice. This isn't a policy that we're adopting. This is a choice the voters are making, and then if they make it, it's our obligation to send it to Richmond. Now, we did that once before, and I think Mrs. Henley is the only one that was on council at the time. Glenn Clannan was in the House of Delegates, if you, and for those who remember, I know Mr. Leahy remembers. It passed the General Assembly on the House side, then sheriffs, then senators, state folly, in the Senate side, kind of boondoggled it, or kind of horse, what do I want to call it, lassoed it, and changed it to, away from the district system to making them equal size versus district voting, and with the help of a former mayor, then vice mayor. And so we got something out of the General Assembly that the voters didn't ask for, but that's what we got, and that's the system we have today. Then we had another referendum, which is mentioned here, and it didn't pass. So that just shows you that, you know, when this thing here took tolling costs as to what the people might or might not do, 24 years has passed, there's no guarantee when you go to Richmond what will come out. I just shared that story with you, but that's well documented for those who know. And for those who go back to the days of Sidney Kellam, and can remember Ivan Mapp, I know Mrs. Henley and I can both remember Sidney, he used to be at the Pancake House, having their Democratic breakfasts, when the Democrats were, were running the, the city at that time. And the reason why we have the system we have today was they were concerned that the more urban areas, or suburban areas of the city at the time, would load up the farmers with a lot of debt. So they wanted to make sure that the districts had a residential, the boroughs at that time, had a residential member, so you had to live in Blackwater, which was John Baum at the time, had to live in Punggol, Mrs. Henley, to make sure that the urban areas couldn't outvote with debt and taxes, and make farming very expensive. That's the history of why we have that borough system, and why we had the charter limitation on debt. That's still in our charter, goes back to those early days when the city was not dominantly developed, but was principally agriculture, and the Mennonites had lots of farms in Virginia Beach. And that was the political compromise to make sure that the agricultural interest didn't get outvoted in terms of where the representation had to come from. So, so while we praise the system that we have, we have to realize it was done to protect a certain segment of the community that felt over time they might be, and over time, that Kellam machine, as it was called today, solid state, the serbization, and changed. And then when it goes back, go back in history, when Al Balco ran for reelection, he lost his, won his district, which was in Lynnhaven, but lost at large. And then that's when then Mayor Ovindor had the Mayor's Commission on Reapportionment, or something like that, I forget the exact name, but there was an actual report that was issued on redistricting and going to a district system, which ultimately fed this 1994 referendum. And of course, I just shared with you the history of how that turned out. So I just think some new members might not have the benefit of that history. I know, I think I had that report put in your packages in the past, if you hadn't read that, but there is a long history here. But in the end, it should be a history of not being afraid of giving the people a choice, a choice to make a structural change. And if they don't want structural change, and always the tendency inertia is to stay with the status quo, we'll see. But we should trust the people we trust to vote us in, we should trust them to make that choice, that choice of their own education about what direction this city should take. And I, I look forward to the public hearing, I look forward to having a, a more robust discussion. But I do encourage all of you, if you still have that report, if you don't, you can still secure it from the city clerk, to read that, that report. It was Don Clark, I think, was the chairman, and maybe you remember him, Mr. Tower, Don Clark, the lawyer. He chaired that group, but it is a good read, and I think it will give you a historical perspective of how we, how we got to be here, and, and all that stuff can, is available for the general public as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Henley, did you have a comment?
Oh, well, I was just going to say, that's the history, according to John Moss. I really wasn't here at the time of Mr. Sidney Kellam and the first apportionment. I've been here a while, but not that long.
Okay.
Well, you were in the city, though, isn't that?
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
But I wasn't the Punggol District Representative.
Thank you. Well, I just want to kind of summarize a couple things and, and make sure we're all on the same page. So first of all, I'm perfectly fine with public hearing next meeting, and then a subsequent meeting, or, and then subsequently to vote on the referendum. Completely fine with either rewording it, or taking, tearing off the stop sheet altogether. I don't really have a lot invested in the, in the cover of this ordinance, mostly just the question. I want to address just a couple things. We, we can always say that we have concerns about when to do something, or why to do something, or why not to do something. And I think what we have to, to acknowledge in this circumstance is, if not now, when? And are we going to kick the can down to the next four years and, and the next presidential race? And there will be, there will be some contentious issue then, and there will always be some contentious issue on every, in every election. But I, I, I am, I am really concerned about the way current events are going today. I think a lot of what we're seeing in the news nationally and locally stems from an enormous amount of people feeling unheard. And I can, I can share with you the Pew Research Center study that I got my data from today, and there is 62% of the city in Virginia Beach that has not weighed in on this issue. And that should be of concern to every council member, whether they are in favor of this or not in favor of it, because it means we have, we have neglected to list, to give people the opportunity to be heard. And, and, and in, in response to the concern that there won't be any educational groups out there trying to push this issue one way or the other, we do, we, we will have, there will be educational groups in the grassroots level pushing this issue, I'm certain on both sides. And we know that there's the, the trial date coming up in October that will be very public. And I think if we aren't on the forefront of this issue, saying, we're really interested in knowing what the people think of this issue, I think that, that, that's going to reflect poorly on us. And so I look forward to having a public hearing at the next meeting, and, and the dialogue that comes forth because of that, and then hopefully, we'll have it passed in the meeting following. Thank you.
Okay, to wrap up the discussion, we'll schedule the public hearing for next week.
Next week, thank you.
Okay. Any other thing on potential refer, yes?
Just, I would appreciate a little direction on, am I taking the agenda request form completely off? Are we modifying the text? In order to have this in your agenda books, and for the public to see the question, we have to get that done in the next 36 hours or so. So I, I heard that there was concern about what is written on that front page. I heard some people saying they wanted things added to it. I had other people saying, we don't care if you have anything at all. I, I just would like to have some direction so that whatever staff does isn't wrong.
I think it may be advisable, if you might, don't mind me chiming in right now, to have the balance of the other, you know, you know, the benefits of it, and maybe have it that way, whether there's thoughts on that.
I think it's best just to have the ballot question.
Well, that, that, the only, the only thing that I, as the city attorney, would say to you on that is, that is highly political.
Okay.
For, for staff to draft that.
Okay.
Can I?
Wherever you sit, you may be able to criticize what we do, and I'm just a little uncomfortable with it.
Point well taken.
May I make a recommendation, Mark? Would we be able to just include the background and take the, cut the consideration section?
I can do whatever this body tells me to do, because you're, it's, it's being requested by council, so it can, it can reflect the content that this body wishes it to reflect.
So for the sake of having a cover sheet, so to speak.
Excuse me, Jessica, can I just?
Yeah, please.
It's not just the cover sheet, it's, it's the actual text of the resolution itself.
Yeah, I think it should just be the ballot question.
Where, where it's, whereas.
Okay, wait a minute.
Which line, Guy?
At the time.
Thirty-three.
Is there, is there another copy that I can be looking at? Because we passed them around, but I, I didn't.
Can we, Guy, would you be okay if we started at 33, and then went to?
Jessica, 33 through 40 is the.
Is that, yeah, what?
Is 33 through 40 is the sort of.
I'm comfortable removing that.
I mean, if I can, I mean, I, I recognize the fact that people are trying to carve this up of the dais, but I think that's an extraordinarily bad thing to do.
Yeah.
Less, less than a week away from when we want to have this public hearing. If this document can't stand on its own, we need another one. Otherwise, I think this is the document that, that a member of council has requested that we bring forward. So have a public hearing on this document, and then we can editorialize it after the fact. But, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree with the changes being made here. Frankly, I don't like the way the question is worded, so if we get to that point, you know, I, I have some changes I'd like to make in the question, but I, I don't think it's, it's right for me to sit here and wordsmith it right now. I mean, I'll talk to Jessica about it separately, and maybe she'll incorporate it, maybe she won't. But I mean, I just, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're sitting here, you know, 15 minutes before we're supposed to go into closed session, and trying to rewrite this thing, and we're talking about having a, having a public hearing in seven days, I just think it's, it's not a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Bellucci, and then Ms. Wilson.
Well, I just have to say, I agree with Councilman Wood on, on the point he just made about the, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be drafting this here, and I think procedurally, it's a, it's a huge mistake, because as was noted by council members Moss and Henley, this is quite a substantial change. And it's one that requires conversation, dialogue, and carefully crafted language. Now, I'm perfectly open and agree with Councilmember Moss that our deference should be to the will of the people of Virginia Beach about what system works best for them. And so on that regard, I don't want my comments to be construed as being oppositional to asking the question. However, what we haven't done here today is talk about the virtues of the system that we have. And I don't think the language that's presented before us today gives fair credit to the merits of the system we have. It presupposes that because we haven't asked the question, that the people are asking for change. And other than Councilmember Abbott, for sure, and, and I, and I do hear it in the community. I do hear that people, people would like to have change, or at least would like to have a dialogue. But I also hear from a lot of people that there's virtue to the system, that the system is good, and that it represents everyone across the city in a way that is more complete than if you just have a district member. So there's pros and cons to each system. I don't think we're giving fair consideration of the pros and the cons to each system, and I think moving this so quickly denies the public the opportunity to have that more fair, complete conversation. So I don't know what the timeline looks like, but I think, I think having the discussion up here, in the way that Councilmember Wood just pointed out that we're doing, is not in the best interest of the public of Virginia Beach, especially about a matter as important and serious as this. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then we have to wrap, we got to have to get to close soon.
Every council member, this is a well-established policy, and goes back, has the right to put something on the agenda, whether we like it or not. So Mrs. Abbott wants this on the agenda, worded as it is, that is sufficient, because that's the same prerogative you have, and every member of this body have.
Mr. Ross, I never, I never.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just trying to get to the mayor's resolution of what, I think we put it on as is, because that's what the sponsor wants, and the sponsor has the right to put something on the agenda as they want it. And if that's what she wants, I support her placing it on there, we'll have a public hearing, and there'll be another time and place, as Mr. Wood said, to have that discussion.
Okay. Let's go, we go ahead and do that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay.
I have raised my hand.
Yes.
And one public hearing for something this momentous, and not having enough dialogue is just not enough. I mean, this changes our whole system of government, having one public, I mean, we give developments, we have three meetings for development, more than something changing our whole way of government. This is just two meetings. It's just crazy.
But, you know, I think, I think a point is that, you know, having the public hearing, then we can decide, you know, which direction to go. But once again, you know, we do have a council member that wants to put a res, you know, an agenda item on the thing, which is anybody's prerogative, so, you know, so, but once again, then, at, you know, the results of the public hearing, then we can go accordingly. Okay?
Thank you. I just, I just was asking for direction.
No, no. Mark, I truly appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate your advice in council, okay?
I have one question.
Yes.
A good, what are the topics that we can start thinking about, that are going, that are, of the tally that you receive, Mr. Mayor? What are the topics that will be on our council discussion at our next meeting?
Okay, I'll tell you what.
I was going to get to talk about short-term.
Yes, yeah, you can, yeah.
I yield a Mrs. Henley.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that to you, you know, over the next day. Okay, Ms. Henley.
Well, it's just that the issue at Sandbridge occurred Thursday night, and I just thought it was important that we talk about it now, when it's timely. I can't tell you how sick it made me feel when I got the first call telling me about that debt collapse. The fact that four people were injured was pretty tragic, but it could have been a lot worse. And we have had a debt collapse that was worse. But it's the kind of thing that I know is going to happen over and over and over again with these short-term rentals, where we are overcrowding these buildings that were built only as single-family residences. And I have such a short. And I have such a short amount of time, I really am choosing my words as carefully as I can. But it's five years ago that we started talking about this, in June of 2015. In 2016, we had two different groups established that had public hearings around the city on this issue, first beaches and waterways, and then we had a committee specifically to talk about this. This is not an issue that's coming to us at the last minute for some kind of discussion. It's been under discussion for five years, and if you didn't know about it, you had to be under a rock someplace, because we have talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. And that second committee, one of the things that they recommended specifically said, "The committee believes that the General Assembly should grant authority to localities to promulgate health and safety requirements, to address parity with other transient occupancy providers, and to ensure that rental dwellings are reasonably safe." We can't do that, because we are restricted by the building codes of Virginia and the way it's all made, and I can't begin to go through that in two minutes. These things are all single-family residence construction. Many of these are being constructed as they're requesting that they be short-term rentals. So these people that are building them know full well they're not going to use them as single-family residences. Our people over in the building permits department know they're going to be short-term rentals. We know they're going to be short-term rentals, because you all are approving them as short-term rentals, but they're being constructed as single-family residences. And they are not having the safety components that they would have to have if they were being constructed as transient rental facilities. And many of these are very old. Some of these you heard about today, that are coming up in the next few weeks to us, are really houses that were constructed 30 or 40 years ago. You know their construction as single-family residence. Plus, we have said, "Three people per bedroom, no matter what size," even though there are requirements in the state code that a bedroom has to have 70 square feet for the first person and 50 square feet for the others, but we just say, "I three for bedroom, no matter what size." We're overcrowding these facilities that have no health and safety inspections or requirements. And this is not a good thing to put out for Virginia Beach, that these places are not inspected, we don't have any safety inspections, we don't have any safety requirements, we don't have any Health Department requirements, we don't have any Health Department inspections. And here in the middle of a pandemic, we're in residential neighborhoods, we're bringing people in twice a week, a turnover of people from who knows where, to live next door to our residents, there's absolutely no way they're going to quarantine or anything else. We didn't anticipate a pandemic, but that's another thing that's on top of all of this. We have so many exposures for problems with health and safety and welfare, which is our responsibility. And the deck collapse was the beginning. We should be requiring all of those facilities that have decks to have an inspection every year, but we don't have anything that we're requiring for health, safety, and welfare. There should be requirements about exits being marked, but that was cut out early on, because somebody didn't want to have to mark the exits. So many things that we need to be doing if we're going to be crowding in, if we're overcrowding these facilities and allowing them for short-term rentals. It's not safe for the people who are coming, and they need to know that, that when they come to Virginia Beach for a weekend at a short-term rental, there has been absolutely no inspections, no health requirements, no safety requirements of any kind, you're just taking your chances. And that's the message we need to put out, and because that's the message, I am still not voting for any short-term rentals until we get our act together and put some good restrictions and good requirements as conditions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. John, we--
I just want, I asked this question, but I remember when the first one came in Sandbridge, and I think there was a death in that, I think, I can't recall, but the one that fell. But I remember the paper covering, and I posed this question to Mr. Leahy, I believe, that there was a requirement that decks were supposed to be certified, it was mentioned in the article, every two years if it was a rental property. Was that in fact, is that accurate? I just remember--
I think I'm going to have to call on the planning staff.
I'm just curious.
Okay, let's see if we--
We can get it later, but--
We'll find out.
Yep.
We'll find out.
We'll get back to you.
Okay. Are there any other council comments at this point?
I do have some good news.
Okay.
On another thing. For two years, we have been working on an issue, looking at the role of forestry with flooding. We had a study that we commissioned, along with the Nature Conservancy, to have Dr. Daniel McLaughlin at Virginia Tech do an analysis, a study of the role of trees with flooding and looking at evapotranspiration. Well, that work has been finished for a year. Every time we have planned a presentation, something has happened, so that we've not gotten his work out there. He is going to be making a virtual presentation on the 23rd, that's Thursday of next week. It will be viewed over in Building 19 at 5:15 at my regular forum, but we're going to have this set up socially distanced for 35 people, the first 35 people who register to come that evening will be able to see Dr. McLaughlin and ask questions. Our IT folks, I believe, are going to be taping it so that it can be replayed on Channel 48, which is what we did when we had the whole series of things presented two years ago. So finally, we're going to hear our Virginia Tech presentation and see this, and then be able to move forward. So if you would like to attend on the 23rd, let me know. I'll put your name down, and you can be one of the 35. We're going to make sure everybody wears a mask and is properly socially distanced, and Building 19 will allow that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. General review, Mr. Wood?
Thanks. Amanda, no change to what you sent me earlier?
Just so, also, so you're aware, one of the planning items, the applicant's requested withdrawal on one of the conditional use permits, but not the other ones I'm talking about, the short-term rentals for Leonard Lyon at 8709 Atlantic Avenue. You all received an email?
Yeah, we're going to hear that one.
Okay, wanted you to know.
Okay. So, ordinances, resolutions, there's just two items, everybody okay with those? Okay. Under planning, Mr. Jones is running late, but he told me J1 he wants to hear. I believe J2 is the same thing, that's also Bayside District, so we'll hear that. Item 3, we want to hear, because I've got some issues with that. Item 4, Mary White, conditional use, short-term rental, 8006 Atlantic Avenue, Lynnhaven District. That one I'm okay with, but I understand--
I'm voting no.
Got that, okay. All right, 3300 Arctic Avenue, conditional use permit for short-term rental, 3300 Arctic Avenue, Beach District.
I'm okay with it.
No.
Same. Okay. All right, Harshit Dua, short-term rental, 716 16th Street, Beach District.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
Gotcha.
No.
Poochie LLC, short-term rentals, 208 27th Street, 201, 202, 203, 204.
Okay with that.
Gotcha.
No.
All right, VB5 LLC, VB5 LLC, short-term rental, 1728 Baltic Avenue, Beach District.
Okay.
No.
Same. Okay. 21st Street, well, 21st Development LLC, short-term rental at A 417 21st, 419 21st, 417th, 21st and a half, 419 21st and a half, Beach District.
Okay.
No.
John, same.
Right.
Item 10, Ocean Rental Properties LLC, for conditional use permit, short-term rental, 607 20th, 609 20th, 611 20th. I'm sorry. Yeah.
No.
And I assume it doesn't matter, Mr. Stiles, but the one listed under item 3 says 11686 Street, and it's actually 116th 88th Street, because when I went looking for it, I thought, I was completely confused. In the actual agenda form, it does have the right address, but in the short version here, it's got, it's two streets over.
Sorry.
Is the public hearing notice correct?
I'll have to look. Hope so.
If the public hearing notice is correct and the actual long-form agenda is correct, I think you're okay, but if the public notice is incorrect, then that is a problem.
Yeah, because there is a, there is a sign, I saw the sign.
It's 88th Street in the public notice.
And that is the correct address?
I think so. Sorry, what you said? 88th is the correct address.
Yes, that's what's in the notice.
That's on the notice, I'm sorry, that was on my mistake.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure it was correct and what the public sees. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 21A Code of Virginia as amended for the following, make that 37, yeah, 21, for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion of consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 3, Rose Hall District. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation as specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agency, or appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, if you can call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Belucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Ten to zero.
Okay, we are recessed into executive.